Thank you. We seek blessings on the tasks before us. Bless our efforts with clear insight, our deliberations with wisdom, our work with clarity and accuracy, and our decisions with impartiality. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
... in the state of America, and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, equal, free, and just in all.
Mrs. Frank, approval of city council minutes? A motion? Need a motion?
So moved, second.
Uh, any questions or changes? If not, Mrs. Frank. Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Mr. Mackey?
Yes.
Mr. Pelisi?
Yes.
Mr. Bider?
Yes.
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mrs. Katz?
Yes.
Um, limited courtesy of the floor, we have quite a few. Uh, first one up is going to be Mr. Tim Butters. And when you come to the podium, three minutes, name and address.
Hello, Tim Butters, 508 Cabbage Hollow Road, Williamsport. The premise of my questions this evening is about the the sale and the bidding process of the City Hall building. So I have the proposal memorandum, and I see the objective, I see the intention, I see the proposal requirements and evaluation procedure. So based on this information, I have some questions. And I was hoping that maybe, I don't know if you want to answer them tonight, or but uh, so what criteria and scoring was established when this building was put up for sale and the bidders to be invited? That's one of my questions.
We can't answer anything during during this process right now.
And are you going to make public the criterion bidding scoring procedure? How did you score the three bids that were received for the building? And what factors were examined and what score was given to each factor? And you're obviously, you're going to make all the bidding procedures public. And why you chose or didn't choose or whatever this because I sent a letter after the first time it was tabled back, I think August 27th, I believe. I sent a letter out September 2nd asking for the criteria, and I did not receive any anything. So that's, that's the premise of my, that's all I just want to get an understanding because it's just this memorandum that I have is just very vague in my opinion. While the city would like to obtain the highest sale price possible, it is equally focused on finding the right buyer. Okay, how do you guys going to find the right buyer? How, what procedure I see? And then underneath it says details of offer terms, plan for the building, general timeline list. Are you going to score each one of those? Are you going to do an evaluate, what evaluation procedure you're going to do? Are you going to do an economic stud- study of the three bids to see what is the best for the city? And for the merchants downtown? These are my questions. You guys all know what I did to the original City Hall building. I made a destination place. Williamsport is not growing. The only economic revitalization of the downtown is going to be from people coming to visit. People come to our hotel over at Pine Street, I will create the same type of building over in the the, the, this City Hall building. The theme will be similar. It'll all be about the city of Williamsport. The economic impact is going to be considerable, and it's not just a pie out of the sky. I've been operating since 2016. With, so the economic impact to downtown is going to be three to five million dollars a year. I'm going to bring over 25,000 people. So, and you know, I, I sent you everything, just read some of the reviews of all the people that stay at our hotel. Uh, and they come and stop and because they love coming to the hotel and then they they enjoy going, coming to Williamsport. But until Williamsport grows, the only way that I see bringing money to downtown Williamsport is getting people to actually come to downtown Williamsport. So I hope you consider, and then I got one final question. Should you decide to reject all bids? What would your basis be for doing so? So, I don't know when you can answer these questions. I'm sure this is all on the, you know, public. So, you know, I would just like it to be public and the, the, the town and the public should know how you guys make a determination, especially when you put it out, that the most equally important is finding the right buyer. Well, how do you do that? And how did you score that? That's all. Just would like to know that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Tim. Next person up is Michael Chalantus.
White Chalantus, 1601 James Road in Williamsport. I've come unprepared because this is on a spur of the moment for me. My concern is, uh, City Hall should not be, uh, City Hall belongs to the people of Williamsport, not to one individual, not to the mayor, not to city council, it belongs to us. It should be on the ballot to vote for the people of Williamsport. Uh, and uh, we have a beautiful building downtown, and if given over to private hands, yes, Mr. Butters has done a beautiful job on the original City Hall that I agree with right there. And I agree with him that Williamsport is not growing, but the monies are there to repair City Hall. I can Google it to Washington. There's hundreds and hundreds of millions of dollars for historic buildings across this nation, government buildings. We've lost the people. We lost Jason Fitzgerald. He was fired. Bill Nichols built this place. Yes, it was a lot, there's a lot of shenanigans there, which not important right now, but he brought the money in. Two people were fired within the week, within months, that had the network in, in Harrisburg and in Washington to bring the monies in to this town. They're no longer here because of one individual, Mayor Slaughter. We're not progressing. We're going backwards in this town because of one person, Mayor Slaughter. And we need council members and others in this town to unite to save this building. And not much more that I'd like to say other than it should be brought out on the ballot to the people of Williamsport. Thank you.
Thank you. Um. Next person is Tony Visco.
Good evening, Mayor and Council and other city administration that's here. Um, I guess what I'm going to do is kind of just fill in a little bit, and hopefully I can condense all this in three minutes. But um, I just want to make everyone aware that I've been around here in Williamsport practicing architecture for a little over 53 years, since 1975. And I, I mean, I'm certainly a a bona fide community supporter. Um, I did a facilities needs assessment for the city in February of 2017, actually was completed. And you know, I know this, your existing City Hall as well as most other people, every room, every space, I toured every space in there to know what the good and the bad and the ugly was for anywhere in that building. And you know what? The unfortunate thing is, no one, no one in the city has ever asked me my opinion of what I think things may cost for anything. And I've heard numbers flying around of 10,000 square feet, that's all we need. I heard on the last meeting, all we need is 12,000 square feet. Well, I sat down and kind of looked at my own study because certainly I did it, and I even had it broken down by departments, and I looked at all that square footage. Yep. 12,000 square feet is probably what it is in air. Okay, it's just the room size, it doesn't include anything else. It doesn't include, it's just net space. It doesn't include the council chambers because that wasn't added in, doesn't include the stairs, doesn't include the corridors, interior, exterior walls, electrical, mechanical rooms, elevator, elevator lobby, community rooms, conference rooms, although a few of the smaller conference rooms are part of the suite, which I did count that way, or a lobby. It's actually closer, that space that you would need, new renovating, the old City Hall are actually occupying some other spaces, going to be closer to 27,000 square feet. That's what it is. You know, someone had bothered to say, hey, what do you think? I, I would have given you my opinion. I even said, gee, if you do a new building, it's going to be at least 25,000 square feet. And I did some quick calculations and including prevailing wage and all that, you're over $6 million for that part. And you got site work. You've got architectural and engineering fees, land development, stormwater. You're probably going to be in seven or seven and a half million dollars, my guess, to do a new standalone building, less whatever the land costs you, unless you have land that you can put it on. And that doesn't even address the police. I mean, certainly I look at the police and all their evidence they've, that they've got on first floor and basement, which is probably close to 10,000 square feet. Where's all that going to go if you sell the building today? Where is all that going to move to? I mean, there's things like that that disturb me the most is the fact that the police, their lockers, their exercise room, as I had mentioned before, a little bit earlier, uh, on the last meeting here that, you know, I've done a lot of police departments, I know what they need, I know what they have for equipment, they've got a huge bag, it's, and they've got a lot of equipment, their, their bulletproof vests, the whole shebang that they got to bring along with them all the time. And it's like, no one's addressing all this stuff. And really, you'd need to just sit back and think about the benefits of what you could do if you did stay where you're at and just renovate, because a lot of the basement state space doesn't necessarily need to be changed much at all, because that should be storage. And you've got tons of storage already down there by by community development, by codes, as well as the police department. So to me, it it just, I think preserving our city, our current City Hall the way it is and doing the necessary renovations is kind of the hard thing to do, and maybe that's, I think, what, what needs to really kind of be done. You know, nothing's easy, nothing is easy. And I'm guaranteeing you, you know, you're in the twenties, easy, 25, 27,000 square feet when it's all said and done. And, and that's frustrating to think that there's some easy, quick, down and dirty solution. There never is. It's always going to be just some hard work and just, you know, kind of push forward. Whether you have to stay temporarily at Trade and Transit Center 1 and 2 and other spaces that you're now using temporarily till you can really scope out how best to accommodate the goal of perhaps preserving City Hall. I think that's, that's the kind of thing you really need to step up to the plate too. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Tony. Next up is Penny Vanderlin.
I have copies of the remarks that I plan on making. Would you like copies?
Sure.
May I? My name's Penny Vanderlin. I live at 1322 Cherry Street in Williamsport. I'd like to give a history lesson tonight. 25 years ago, a developer planned a movie theater on 15 acres of abandoned land located between Third Street and Fourth Street, bound by Rose and Elm Park. He had an approved land development plan. It was approved by city council. Our neighborhood discovered that this developer had purchased 20 homes in the 1400 block of West Fourth Street with plans to displace families, demolish houses, and have city council rezone for additional parking for future development. Our neighborhood fought against the rezoning and the destruction. Three times, this case went to county court, and three different county judges sided with the neighborhood. City council voted to preserve the neighborhood. The city planning commission voted to preserve the R2 neighborhood. Those who fought for their neighborhood were called names. We were maligned by city officials by saying that we had a hidden agenda and that we were a self-serving interest group. Over three different county judges, the planning commission and city council had all voted to preserve the R2 residential neighborhood. This same city council capitulated to the developer's request. Why? Well, I went to some quotes from the city council members from 25 years ago, and I took them from the Williamsport Sun Gazette. And these city council members said, oh, I hope it's finally done. I'm tired of this. A decision has to be made. This process has been an ordeal. City council members were tired. So fast forward 25 years to today. Have you looked at that 15 acres of land between Third and Fourth Street earmarked and approved for development? Have you looked at the south side of the 1400 block of West Fourth Street where 20 family homes used to stand? There is nothing there. It's desolate. 25 years ago, city council destroyed an R2 neighborhood because they were tired. They wanted the ordeal to go away. Sometimes when you think you've washed your hands of a controversial issue, you just get bigger problems. When you lose control, you never know what you're going to get. Promises from developers are not realities. Today, you, this city council, has a similar situation. I share this Williamsport history lesson tonight in hopes that you won't repeat it. Please don't make a vote just to get it over. Tonight, we have a knowledgeable, passionate group of Williamsporters who are willing, willing to roll up their sleeves and assist with whatever it takes to save our City Hall. We also have a dedicated group of men and women on city council who have anguished over selling or rehabbing City Hall. You don't get thanked enough. Thank you. We appreciate you. We abandon our last City Hall from neglect. Are we going to be the city that has had our City Halls located in two nationally registered buildings, I mean, that were monumentally grand? That were allowed to deteriorate and then abandoned? Is this the kind of legacy that this city council wants to leave? If you don't know where you're going, any road will get you there. You have an obligation to your constituency to show us a plan forward. Vote no to stop the sale of City Hall. Thank you.
Thank you, Penny. Next person up is Bill Logue.
Good evening. Thank you for letting me speak. My name is Bill Logue, and I live at 822 Second Avenue. And I'm also a member of the Rural Avenue Neighborhood Alliance. Tonight, you're being asked to approve the sales agreement, agreement to sell City Hall to J. Bass. This agreement refers to a deed. The mayor has alluded to deed restrictions. Unfortunately, the deed and its restrictions are not included in this sales agreement. Therefore, you don't know what these restrictions are. How can you approve a sales agreement without full disclosure of a deed and its restrictions? The deed is the only document that has teeth. Mayor Derek Slaughter said, and I quote, "Even if the building is sold, it can't be knocked down or altered from the outside." Without deed restrictions, unfortunately, this is just not true. This is from the National Park Service website. Under federal law, the listing of a property in the National Register places no restrictions on what a non-federal owner may do with their property, up to and including destruction, unless the property is involved in a project that receives federal assistance, usually funding or licensing and permitting. So if you do sell this building to J. Bass or anyone, there is no guarantee that City Hall won't be demolished. I would also like to point out that J. Bass bought the YMCA four years ago. He recently asked the city for 1.1 million dollars to finish the job. That goes directly against the statement to council this week when he said, I quote, "I'm not looking for handouts." You've, you've all driven past YMCA the last four years. The demolition of the building was left littered with debris, surrounded by a chain link fence. I'm not sure who owns the empty lot, or if it was part of the $1 that J. Bass paid for the property. I do know he owned a building for four years and outside was left untouched. I'm happy to see that he's begun removing the graffiti and addressing the eastern exterior. But meanwhile, we paraded by the building, the chain leak fence, the graffiti, the derelict empty lot for years, and I do mean paraded. Williamsport walking in the world. So J. Bass has shown us that he won't keep his worksite tidy. He asked for more money, and the National Registry will do nothing to stop him from leveling this building. The only way to ensure continued presence of this historic building is to put our big boy pants on and fix it ourselves. Thank you.
Thank you. Um. Next up is Gloria Mealy.
Hello, uh, thank you for having me. I'm Gloria Mealy from 407 West Fourth. Um, also a mother of the infamous Liz Mealy.
Yeah, mom.
I've, um, been hearing a lot about that we have no plan for City Hall. Everyone says, well, there's just no plan. Well, why not take the recommendation of the ad hoc committee, which spent nine month, months reviewing the issue of City Hall? Seven people spent nine months. The committee, which included the mayor, voted unanimously to recommend staying in City Hall as the cheapest and best option. Now, that was two years ago, but not much has changed. A group of us toured City Hall recently and found nothing wrong, other than some drywall that was not repaired after the gutter leaked. There's a quote from one of the people who bid on City Hall, Mr. Felver. He said, "I toured that building before I bid. Every mechanical worked, mostly cosmetic that needs update." That's what Mr. Felver said. So, we have a stately Richardson Romanesque building that has been our City Hall since 1970. It's worth, I feel, at least a million dollars, and we're thinking of selling it for 500,000. That's half price. Why not take the recommendation of the ad hoc committee and do the right thing? Stay in City Hall, vote no for the sale. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Lisa Fink.
Hello, I'm Lisa Fink, 338 Mifflin Place. Hi, members of the council. Last month I spoke about your frustration, and it seemed to resonate. So tonight, I'd like to address your fatigue. As one of you confessed to me this week, you're tired, so tired that you've reached the point of apathy. Or as Liz said the other day, we all want to get this behind us. You're worn out, I get it. Worn down and tired of the shell game that's gone on, the comparison of apples to oranges, the lack of solid figures, the lack of vision, leadership, and transparency from you, the mayor. So let me ask you, Mayor Slaughter. What is the end game? Are you content having your city government scattered across town? Is it okay with you that you are currently spending more taxpayer money to house this city's government than is necessary? Is it okay that you, the mayor, codes, the treasurer, the controller, economic development and finance, the police administration, the city clerk, et cetera, are not easily accessible to your constituents? What's your end game? Mr. Mayor, over the years, you have made it perfectly clear that you don't want to be in City Hall. You have actively taken steps to get out and stay out. As far back as 2019, when you were on city council, you voted against using available funds to begin making City Hall ADA compliant. What's your end game? Why didn't you contact the insurance company when there was water damage at City Hall? What happened in December 2021 when the pipes burst in the vacated building? Was the heat not turned on in a timely manner? Was there an insurance claim filed after this incident? What is your end game? Why did you not return to the building when the mold reports came back in September of 2021, showing that there was no mold problem in City Hall? Why did you not publicly release the mold report? What is your end game? City Hall was condemned because of this mold. Why wasn't that condemned status removed once the mold studies came back negative? Why does City Hall still to this day continuously be referred to as condemned? What is your end game? Why have you not applied for grants to repair City Hall? Grants are available. Why have you made no effort in that direction? You've mentioned rehabbing another historic building. Why not rehab the one we own? You allude to building a new building. At what cost to the taxpayers? This building, Trade and Transit 2, cost 15 million 10 years ago, before the price of building materials skyrocketed. Maybe we could all get behind you if you would share your vision. Because right now, you seem content to do nothing. And you've worn down your city council, they're tired, but I entreat you not to give up. You selling this building, you sell this building, and you still won't have a roof over your heads. You need to hold this mayor's feet to the fire. What is his end game?
Thank you. Uh, next person up is Judy Lyons.
My name is Judy Lyon, West Fourth Street. First of all, I want to thank you for your service. I know that at certain times, it has to be an exhausting and thankless job, but thank you. Everyone talks about the weather, but nobody does anything about it. We need to talk about a master plan for Williamsport. What would attract people to come here? Well, obviously, we live in the beautiful Susquehanna Valley. It's beautiful. Our, our state is known as the Pennsylvania Wilds. People come here for hunting and fishing and wonderful boating. Lots of outdoor activities. What's, what is bringing them into our city? What attracts them to Williamsport? There must be something, because there are a lot of tour buses going around. And they're here, and they talk about the fascinating history and the beautiful buildings and homes. The historic district in Williamsport was saved by a few, um, very forward people. And, and it was done because of them. Our downtown was very vital at one time. I'm a 50s gal. I was here. Going downtown was a treat. Buses would drop you off. You could walk to the stores, the offices, the banks, movie theaters. Cars were not used to go from one place to another. Cars were not used to go from one place to another. One of these gorgeous buildings with City Hall, so magnificent that it's listed on the National Register of Historic Properties. You say it's too large, 40,000 square feet, but really only about 20,000 feet of usable space besides storage. Think of the expansion opportunities that you'd have with that much. City Hall, it means it belongs to the people, the citizens. We should be proud of that. Citizens and tourists alike would be welcome to tour that building. Comfort facilities, which are very much needed in this town, would be there. City Hall is sold to the highest bidder. What does that say to the citizens that have put their heart and souls, and yes, their own money, into preserving the beautiful structures? I'd have to say shame on you. It's my understanding the problems with the building are cosmetic. There was no mold problem. Williamsport has many talented people that have great vision and are ready, willing, and able to help. Just ask. You must recall the local artist Marguerite Beerman. She did absolutely wonderful things to the YWCA, the library, the churches. She had such vision and made such beauty out of these buildings. Is the legacy of this council going to be get or done? Or look at the treasure we've saved? Please be the latter. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Bev Deser. And I apologize if I'm not saying your name correctly. Thank you.
Beverly Deser, Fox Hollow Road, Williamsport. And I'm reading comments from Bruce Hoffman, Huffman, and he was unable to be here because of a previous commitment, so he wanted his words read into the record. "Over the last few months, an increasing number of citizens and taxpayers have formally and forcefully voiced their concerns for keeping City Hall at 245 West Fourth Street as the centralized home of Williamsport City Government and the place where all citizens and taxpayers can interact with the various elected officials, administrative heads, and departments of the city. Concerning this, it must be asked, what will your legacy be? Will it be for hearing and working with the citizens and taxpayers who want to create a new vision for an improved City Hall at 245 West Fourth Street, one in which all can be proud of this landmark structure? Or will your legacy be that you sold out the people's building to the highest bidder? A reminder about the way our form of government is mandated to operate seems in order here. The City of Williamsport's optional charter states that the city shall be governed by an elected council, an elected mayor, an elected treasurer, and an elected controller. The charter states that the legislative power of the city shall be exercised by the city council and that the executive power of the city shall be exercised by the mayor. The mayor shall enforce the charter and ordinances of the city. He shall annually report to the council and the public on the work of the previous year and on the condition and requirements of the city government. The mayor shall from time to time make recommendations for action by the council as he may deem in the public interest. Nowhere in the City of Williamsport's charter or in the administrative code is it stated that the mayor alone has the sole power to unilaterally decide on the current or future location of City Hall. The charter does state that the council may create commissions and other bodies with advisory powers. It is not too late for the council to create such a commission of citizens, taxpayers, and other stakeholders to research and plan for how City Hall can be repaired, improved, re-adapted, and made to better serve the inhabitants of Williamsport. Last night, I emailed you two examples of how other cities have done and are doing this. You would have no trouble finding volunteers to serve on such a commission, a commission that would strive to show what a city with a shared vision, strong community partners, and the direct involvement of its citizens can accomplish. You, the city council, have the power to ignite a flame that has the potential to energize the future of Williamsport for decades to come, or you can extinguish that small spark of hope tonight forever. How will you choose? What will your legacy be? I urge you to vote no and stop the sale of City Hall. Bruce Huffman. Thank you.
Thank you. One last person, Bob Kane.
Good evening. I'm Bob Kane, and I live at 849 Louisa Street. I'm a lifetime resident of Williamsport. I've been charged with the summation of this group, and I'll do it quickly. But first, let me mention, I'm just leaving, I just left a party that the Victorian Christmas Committee had for the homeowners that are opening their houses this year for the tours. There's over 50 people over there, and I don't think it'd take much of a guess as to how they want this to roll out tonight. And they want me to report back on what happens here, so it's relevant. City Hall is arguably the most historic, significant building the city owns. Putting that all aside, my message to City Council is focused on the business end of this decision tonight. Just very quickly, we've heard about square footage and that it's not all as clear as one might think, and Tony Visco laid that out expertly. Second, looking at past and current budgets, there are glaring questions about an apples-to-apples comparison of whether we're saving money now or not. The cost to rehab City Hall is far, far, far from a solid analysis. And condemnation of the building is thrown around with no firm estimates to mitigate what problems there are at this point. We have all experienced or heard about the customer service issues we have. This scattered approach to services is not serving us well. Many people have personally experienced that or have heard about it. Number five, no analysis of the cost to consolidate elsewhere had been factored into the equation. Number six, this major historic landmark is not protected from exterior unsympathetic changes, as has been said in the past. And furthermore, there's been no discussion about restrictions. So I guess most importantly, and last point I'll make, is that no plan has been laid out, even hypothetically, because of audit report excuses. The requests for a long-term plan have been ignored and ignored. In conclusion, the future opportunity to sell this building will not slip away if you don't, if you, if you vote no tonight. There would be many opportunities to sell that in the future with the right information. If you do vote to sell tonight, many of your alternate opportunities do slip away, and future costs to unify services will likely cost much more. Each of you has previously voted down proposals of much less significance for lack of appropriate information to make the decision. As has been said repeatedly, we know you're tired of this. If you let this sale go through, though, you are sending the message that it's okay for city operations to ignore your requests. The homework is not done, and we are all watching this vote very carefully, and we will not forget. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all. We're going to switch around here with on the agenda. Mrs. Frank, we're going to go to number six.
Okay, that's an appointment, and you'll need a motion in a second.
Need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Mayor?
Yes, good evening, Vice President Katz, members of council and administration. What you have before you for your consideration is Jade Walton's appointment to the Redevelopment Authority. It would be a five-year term commencing on September 28, 2023, and going until, she's filling, mayor, I should have said, she's filling former Mayor Preziosi's position, so it'll be up, and she'll be up for reappointment very soon here, since she's filling out his term. And I do want to thank former Mayor Preziosi. He's been volunteering with the city for many, many years since leaving the mayor's office, and he had to step down due to some personal reasons, but we do appreciate his time, that he's volunteered on various boards and authorities. And I want to thank Jade Walton for stepping up and offering to volunteer on the Redevelopment Authority. She is here with us this evening, and she was interviewed on Tuesday in Public Safety, I believe.
Public Safety, that would be John, you're up.
Thank you, Bonnie. Yeah, I can confirm this was reviewed in Public Safety. This is by far going to be the safest nomination we've ever made. Mayor, before we get to Ms. Walton, could you, you did this at the meeting as well, virtually, but for the sake of the public, could you just kind of describe and just briefly explain the purpose of the RDA and the abilities that they have now that they didn't have prior to us funding the land bank?
Sure, so council did vote as part of our ARPA budget to fund both the Redevelopment Authority and the Land Bank at around $1 million, which gives both of them the teeth needed, and they have the via blighted property, which now includes residential, industrial, and commercial. And it works through that process and gets to the RDA, the RDAs, or and/or the Land Bank, which actually the RDA Board does serve as the Land Bank Authority as well. We created, council voted to create the Land Bank back at the end of '21, I believe. And so with that now, with the money that was allocated, when a property, we're working on a lot of, there's, I believe, seven or so on the blighted list that have now transitioned to the Land Bank or the RDA, they now have the teeth to acquire, to rehab, et cetera. So that was not necessarily there before, when they just had pennies, for the most part, in that account. So I know the RDA is thankful that they are now able to acquire some of those properties and rehab. So that's one of the functions, the Land Bank has some other functions they can do as well, but the main one is now, yes, they do have money to work with.
And I mean, I can, Ms. Walton, would you like to come up? And you did a great job introducing yourself at the meeting on Tuesday. I'll just say I'm extremely excited to have you coming on board. Thank you for agreeing to do this, so.
Thank you, John. Hi, everybody, I'm Jade Walton. I've lived in Williamsport for several years, and John actually suggested that I look into this because I'm really interested in redevelopment and improving the city economic development planning. I think I have a relevant background for this role, and I'm looking forward to serving.
Great, thank you. And I'll open the floor up to other members of Public Safety or the council in general, if you have any questions for Jade or comments.
Anybody have any questions? If not, we all want to welcome you. Your qualifications are above and beyond, so we're really thrilled. Janice, does she get sworn in? Does she get, at all, does she have to sign a book?
She will have to, but not tonight.
Not tonight. Eventually, you'll get to meet Janice, that's her city clerk, and you'll sign a book.
Okay.
Thank you very much for your service, and we're really pleased for anybody that comes forward to volunteer their time.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Again, like I said, we're going to move around. We are, oh, we have to do a vote. Thank you, guys, keep me on track, I told you. Mrs. Frank?
Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Mr. Mackey?
Yes.
Mr. Pelisi?
Yes.
Mr. Bider?
Yes.
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mrs. Katz?
Yes.
On, next item on the agenda is going to be number nine, Mrs. Frank. If you could read it, please.
Resolution authorizing the execution of an administrative order of consent pursuant to USC 1319.
Need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Mayor Slaughter?
Yes, good evening again, Vice President Katz, members of council and administration. What you have before you is a resolution authorizing the execution of an administrative order of consent pursuant to USC 1319A, which deals with the EPA. We're working with the Water Authority, EPA, and of course, the city on this administrative order of consent, dealing with stormwater enforcement, different things that Solicitor Wiley can discuss much more in depth than myself, if there are questions for him. But essentially, we've met, we've gone over this. EPA is in agreement with us with the plan of action forward, as is the Water Authority, and so it's before you this evening for your consideration. And as I said, Solicitor Wiley is here with us as well.
Welcome, Mr. Wiley.
Oh, good evening, Council Vice President Katz, members of council. Are there any questions regarding this particular action item? I think it's probably easier for me to respond to questions, if there are any, as opposed to a summary, which I think the mayor has done well.
This was presented in Club of Safety, no?
This has not been before committee, however, it has been a product of negotiations, and I would be remiss if I didn't thank members of the Williamsport Municipal Water Authority and Sanitary Authority for their assistance in this process. Mr. Miller's team, along with Wendy Walker and Walter, excuse me, and Cheryl Turpak, were very essential to this process of getting to this point with the order that you have before you.
Does anybody have any questions? Yes.
Thank you, Bonnie. I have two questions, I'm sure you can elaborate on.
Certainly.
And it's usually the two questions I go to anytime that, you know, you mention the word legal counsel, so, anything like that. And those two questions are, what's wrong and what's it going to cost? So if you could give a brief overview, please, just for everyone here in council, and I think members would like to know.
The city has certain obligations under its NDPS permit, NDPEs permit, and those obligations are ongoing. It's part of the MS4 program that the city is part of as well. And so in June of this year, EPA came forward and indicated that there were issues with how the city was administering this program, and it noticed the city of certain violations. It invited the city to come to the table and negotiate a workout of those issues. And so the workout has a couple of different parts, and those are all contained in the order. But first, the city has an obligation moving forward to inventory inspect MS4 discharge points. It's listed in the order as outfalls. That's an ongoing process and an ongoing obligation. And fortunately, it's something that the Williamsport Municipal Water and Sanitary Authority has already been working on in earnest. And so the process that has been commenced will be continued, and so the order has an obligation to continue that. In addition, we need to track our best management practices, and best management practices are going to present themselves in two different ways. One, through land development plans that you probably see and approve. The other is through smaller projects that may not come to council but would require code review, for instance, a single-family house, et cetera. And so there's going to be an obligation to inventory those, track those, and have them in the chain of title. And so we've proposed a way to address that as well. And then finally, the city will have enforcement obligations relative to all of these issues. And the city has an obligation to enforce its stormwater ordinance and then to make sure that it's compliant with its program. So that's where the partnership. and then to make sure that it's compliant with its program. So that's where the partnership with the Williamsport Municipal Water and Sanitary Authority will come into play. A lot of the inventory inspection pieces will fall into their purview. The enforcement part falls into the city's purview. The one thing that I can say about this order, which um, is a positive, is there's no fine or penalty associated with it. So the product of negotiations, the meetings that were had, the work that was done, had EPA comfortable with how we were going to go prospectively as opposed to uh, penalizing us for any issues that uh, had arisen up to this point. And so from our perspective, it's a solid resolution in that way. It's hard to quantify what would be associated with the cost of enforcement, et cetera. Some of that's going to deal with how well people are compliant. Uh, but that'll be part of your codes process uh, moving forward. There'll be violations and those violations will have to be pursued. And then with respect to the inventory and inspection process, that's already in place with the agreement that you have with the Water and Sanitary Authority. And so that's something they're already doing and will continue to do. And this order simply sets some obligations with respect to that. Did did that answer both questions?
Yeah, I think you did a pretty good job.
All right.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Yes.
Any other questions? Yes. Eric.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Wiley, you did mention something um, that I think other people in this room would be a little bit more concerned about, not just when a new construction, say, the Wawa will be approved, having a rain garden. How is this going to directly impact homeowners going forward? So let's say, for example, I decide that I'm going to plant a garden or I'm going to redo my sidewalk and then codes comes out and.
New obligations with respect to any program with this order. Rather, we're putting in place a way to manage those obligations going forward and making sure that they're properly inventoried and inspected. So I can't say that there won't be issues for single-family homeowners. There very well may be, but that's already there. So we're not creating anything new with this order. We're just making sure we follow our obligations.
Ms. Mealy.
Um, so the sense I get of this, Mike, is basically uh, the EPA saying, hey, you weren't listening the first time. This is what you guys need to do and you better get to it. Is that about accurate?
Yeah, I I I think that that's probably, if you want to put brass tacks on the table, that's that's fair. Uh, that uh, from EPA's perspective, there were other opportunities before we got to this point. Uh, however, what I would like to say is that the team that you have in place now and the relationship that you have with the Water and Sanitary Authority was something that um, uh, was viewed positively by EPA and was part of the reason why we're able to get to this type of resolution as opposed to one that may have had some fines or penalties associated with it.
Got it. Um, so it sounds like then our responsibility as council people would be to uh, get together with the Water Authority um, sooner rather than later to make certain of what's and and the administration to make certain of what's the city's responsibility versus what our stormwater authority will be taking care of and then make certain that we have the processes in place.
Yeah, I, I'm sorry.
Make those things happen, correct?
Yeah, I think it's fair to say that this order probably lays that out pretty well.
Okay.
And that the city side of the equation is going to rest in the ordinance and enforcement side. The uh, inventory inspection side is with the Water and Sanitary Authority. Uh, one of the recommendations that we made, and I think it's one that's welcomed by the Water and Sanitary Authority, is some sort of working committee. Uh, now, from my perspective, my thought was uh, that working committee should probably entail at least the people who are going to be responsible for implementing. And so on the water and sanitary side, the key person is probably Wendy Walter uh, and some others. Uh, on the city side, I think it would be important to name someone from codes. It would be important to name, once you have the city engineer position filled, have the city engineer be part of that. To the extent that you feel the need to have a council member as part of it, that's your discretion. But I think if you put that type of working committee together and have regular meetings, that will allow you to track this and make sure that it's being complied with.
Got it. So on the city side, most of this should fall to the city engineer and then perhaps trickle down from there to the codes department.
Yeah, I think you're going to have a two, two-part. I mean, you want the city engineer involved because ultimately his or her knowledge of the system in the city is going to be key. Uh, but codes is an important part of it from the enforcement side of it, no question about that.
Um, Eric, to your point about rain gardens, I think the vast majority of the city of Williamsport is actually uh, combined sewer. Um, so the, uh, that's part of the reason that we had to partner with oil stock for our MS four, um, you know, uh, permit anyway. Um, so uh, it's not really likely that people would receive assignments, so to speak, from the city to 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 do um, uh, BMPs on their properties, but there certainly could be citations for putting things into storm sewers that are not legitimately able to be put into storm sewers.
Right. I I didn't want to ratchet. I didn't want to ratchet down into it in too much detail, but in in fairness, there are going to still be some enforcement issues associated with that. But from a code standpoint, for instance, if you um, if you build a single-family home, you're still going to have BMP obligations related to that, even though it doesn't meet the requirements of land development. And so one of the things that EPA is trying to make sure that we do with this is we track that BMP. And so there'll be a, there'll be a deed restriction or a document recorded in the title. So a subsequent owner knows that they have that ongoing obligation, whether it be uh, rain spouts that don't go into the street anymore or gathered somewhere first or or other best management practices that don't rise to the level of council review.
Anyway, it was my suggestion, guys, that maybe we should sit down with the Water Authority anyway, just to look over because we don't do that often enough to discuss where we're at with the MS four process.
I think I can address that. I can I can address that.
Okay.
Is there any other questions for anybody else? Uh, Mike, in the past, we used to meet with Water Authority at least once a month. And the people that worked on, and this was with Public Works, and the people from the city side was the engineer and also streets and parks. Because they were also responsible for the the um, what was flowing into, they had to keep track of what was, you know, what was needing and not going into the river. Okay, that was their responsibility to to weigh out all of those elements. So it was important and we would meet them at Public Works and uh, to see where we stood, what needed to be done. And that's, that's how we continued all these years. And like I said, I apologized, we things got lost in the translation, especially when we did lose an engineer and also then switching people from streets and parks. Um, but we were on top of this for quite some time. Uh, and you know, it just got lost, you know, and we do have to start meeting regularly at this point to keep, make sure that we keep on track and what the city's responsibilities are.
Yeah, I'll certainly leave it to council's discretion in terms of how you want to structure it. But an idea for what it's worth is maybe you have that working committee report on a regular basis to your public works committee or whichever committee you think would be appropriate to have that.
Wendy and Mike would come to the meetings and they would, they would tell us exactly what need. And then there were times we would meet with the Water Authority and uh, make sure everything was cohesive with everything.
Yeah, part part of this process involved multiple meetings where we were on Zoom calls with EPA officials involving the Water Authority. And there was a nice dialogue process there, and I think there's some good resources there. And the city should avail itself of those opportunities. I think it'll be helpful not only in terms of compliance with this order, but just for the betterment of the city and the MS four projects and and programs moving forward. I think it's a good thing to re-reinstall.
Like I said to you, MS four, they change their rules and regs constantly.
Yeah, understood.
Why you have to keep on top of it.
Yeah. Maybe two letters and a number, but sometimes it's it's challenging, no question.
Exactly. Any other question? Yes.
I don't have a question, just a comment. Um, couple, um, if you've heard uh, BMPs mentioned tonight, their their best management uh, practices uh, that are to be in place. So that's what that means. Uh, how how we function to um, to control the stormwater management problem. And we have been dealing with this for years. Um, but it's mostly been this kind of dense documentation that, but now we're hitting more into with the the Water Authority participating uh, and doing everything that's below the grades, everything that flows under the ground. But the city is still responsible for everything above the ground. So there's a a cooperation there that that we're going to really focus on uh, as we go forward. So um, you're going to, probably going to be hearing more about this and um, and we need, probably need to do um, a good job of educating, uh, making sure everybody has access to to exactly what's going on because it it's not a thing that is going to get fixed overnight and go away. Uh, it's going to be an ongoing process for for quite a while.
Thank you, Randy. Any other questions from anybody? Mrs. Frank will take the vote.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Pelisi.
Yes.
Mr. Bider.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes. Thank you, Mike. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And uh, just on a personal note, I haven't been in front of you for a while and it's nice to see everyone this evening. And then so many familiar faces here. Good luck with the rest of your meeting. Thank you.
Very much.
Thanks, Mike.
Okay, we are going to go down now and go up to number five. Mrs. Frank, we're going to do the presentation of the twenty nineteen audit. We don't need anything. Um, Chris, do we have all people online with this?
Kim Stank, I think. Okay. I, no, that's from the next one. Yeah, so Kim, yes, that's what we'll. Yeah.
Okay, Mayor.
Yes, so uh, on Tuesday in finance, this item was uh, presented. Uh, we had some discussion around it, obviously. Kim talks, um, Kim Stank from our auditors, Zelenkovsky Axelrod, uh, Tracy Rash from our finance department. And uh, I believe, and of course, Councilwoman Mealy can speak to it, but uh, we had some discussions since they received it on Tuesday that you all received initial drafts of the audit Tuesday. Uh, I believe there was some appetite just to have uh, some question and answer tonight with Kim Stank, with Tracy Rash from our team. Uh, and then uh, have a few weeks for city council to digest the numbers, uh, since it's obviously only in draft form at the moment, uh, and then bring it back before council in a few weeks. Um, for it to to for its final approval. Um, and then to go from a draft to the final version of the audits. Uh, and so I know Kim's online uh, to answer questions and I think Tracy was going to talk a little bit maybe too, or or she's available for questions on our end as well.
And it was reviewed in finance.
Um, Ms. Mealy.
Um, yes, uh, this, this, the audit was reviewed in finance um, as best we could, as Mayor Slaughter noted. Um, we didn't receive our draft of the draft um, until nine thirty on Tuesday morning. At which point, um, most of us, I think, probably already had a day lined up that didn't include taking a couple hours to review the audit. Um, so uh, members of the finance committee had had done their best in the short timeframe, but um, but uh, especially um, for better or for worse, this is the first audit that all of us have seen since twenty eighteen. Um, so for many of us, this is the first audit that we have seen. And uh, um, and the the learning curve can be a little steep. Um, so one of the things that we discussed as part of the finance committee was if if there's an appetite, uh, especially amongst the council members who haven't been involved in the audit process before, um, I suggest uh, Ms. Ms. Stank was willing to uh, sort of meet with us in private, not in a, not in a public meeting setting, um, to go over what what the audit looks like, where the numbers come from, yada, 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 the the real, the real high view, um, yeah, uh, sort of um, stuff um, about an audit review. Uh, that that said, when council reviews the audit, it is at base an audit. The the one thing that 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 any of us could be looking for in here is is any numbers that don't gel with our recollection of the twenty nineteen budget year. I suppose that would be the, you know, um, the by and large, if one presumes uh, that the proper financial controls are in place, not Tracy. Then there's, you know, the the audit is is not, is is more something that we simply review and ask questions about and then accept because because it is it is the product, it is the work product of someone who has looked at our books and determined that this is where we stand. Um, uh, but that said, this, this is the first audit we've seen since twenty eighteen. Um, hopefully it will be one of a series of audits that we will see leading us up to perhaps a timely completion of our twenty twenty-three audit. Is that what we're hoping for? Are we hoping to get all the audits, the twenty, 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 twenty-one and twenty-two done before next September, so that twenty twenty-three hits in September as it should? I would anticipate that that would be the case at this point. Yes. Okay, yes. Um, yes, so uh, so we will all have an opportunity to get very up to speed then over the next year on on reviewing audits. Uh, um, so wh- what I said in the course of the meeting was that I didn't anticipate having a lot of time, uh, of the finance meeting was that I didn't anticipate having a lot more time to review this document than I'd had on Tuesday morning. Um, and would appreciate another opportunity to ask questions in two weeks' time, uh, when we come back before uh, we sort of finalize our review of the audit. Um, and uh, Randy and Eric had a handful of observations to make, but I think that was the general consensus amongst the finance committee. Uh, was that we just needed a bit more time. Um, I would note that uh, it is highly unlikely that the um, that the 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 auditor's opinion of our twenty nineteen finances will change regardless of how much work we do. Um, but the the auditors did obviously point out that we did not have adequate financial uh, controls in place to um, to track and make and make certain that our expenditures were being, were being properly tracked and tabulated. Um, uh, one of the questions that we discussed in the finance committee was was whether or not those processes were now in place in the city. Um, and uh, and Tracy says that that, yes, we do have better processes in place, obviously. Our new financial software will also give us a better opportunity to, for financial oversight and financial controls um, within our system. Um, all of that said, I would still be of the opinion that that both council and the administration need to be very proactive. Um, in my experience, uh, as someone who's been on council for a long time, it is relatively easy for financial controls to fall apart. Um, and uh, one of the things we discussed during Tuesday's meeting was that it would be a wise idea for um, all entering council people to receive some sort of a basic uh, rundown on the city, on city budgeting, on city finances, on on what those numbers should look like, because the more people we have um, who know what they're supposed to be looking for, the more likely it is that we spot some some sort of error or or worse, some sort of fraud. Um, uh, that's it, Bonnie. Uh, I'll defer to the other members.
Other questions? Mr. Bider? Mr. Allison? Anybody else? Um, it's Mrs. Stank, do you have anything to say? I'm looking up at a screen.
Hi, thanks for having me here today. Um, just take a look at those statements and um, as we had said, we are willing to do any kind of training. We can kind of walk through these statements. It would probably be a great idea. Um, and we can, hopefully your statements will be very similar over the next, you know, couple of years, whereas we kind of go through nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, and we're hoping for um, a better opinion in twenty twenty-three. So um, that's kind of our plan. Um, as Tracy said, we are trying to help you get back on track. But we'll we'll work through it. We'll get you there.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you.
You're welcome.
No other questions or answers? Oh, yes, Mr. Bider. Oh, yes. Uh, is Adam on?
Yes.
Mr. Yoder, do you have anything to ask?
Uh, thank you. Um, nothing really to ask. I I I was able to catch um, the playback of the finance meeting um, and and a bulk of the conversation related to the audit. Um, the the only thing that really sticks out to me, I I would be, I would be very interested in that audit training. I mean, I I have some formal education in finance and accounting, but I I mean, I don't practice that every day, right? Um, and and certainly it's not in the government space, which is a bit different.
Sure.
I I think in conjunction with that, the one thing that stuck with me um, was I I'd be very interested to understand um, the 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 procurement and gain controls policy. Um, a- and I and I say that um, because I I think it would be wise for us to consider codifying that. Um, a- and I say that specifically um, to ensure, I I think that this is something that would be important for us to make it. It it should be hard to change. Um, so I mean, for example, if in four years, i- if Mayor Slaughter decides not to run um, or would run and somebody would would beat him, um, that um, or would run and somebody would would beat him, um, that future administration could change it. Right? Um, without any kind of input, um, from council. Um, and and whether that is is right or wrong, I think when we're talking governance and controls, um, that that probably should be hard to do, and it should be a probably little bit of a more, um, collaborative process in in modifying. Um, so that might be something worth looking at, um, to maybe solidify the work that uh, that Tracy had done, um, and 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 good work I would I would specifically add, so. Certainly thing that really stuck out, not a question, just a kind of a comment and maybe a continual path forward. I don't know if the auditor has any particular feedback on that, but just based on the conversation, that's something that really stuck out with me.
Yeah, I would say hundred percent documentation of controls and your processes and procedures is so important, and then to ensure that you're actually following those procedures and and internal controls. So, um, it's great that Tracy is helping to implement them. Um, we can talk about them a little bit too when we're doing our, you know, our informal training on financial statements. We can talk about that a little bit if you'd like to. But it is definitely very important, especially to have them documented so that, you know, you can see what is our process.
Thank you, Kim. I appreciate that.
Hey, you're welcome.
And and nothing further from me. Thank you all.
Hey, thank you, Adam. Thank you, Mrs. Stank. Um, if there isn't anything else, thank you all very much. Um, again, we're going to go now to jump around. We're going to go to item eleven. Resolution authorizing the agreement of sale of City Hall between the City of Williamsport and J. Bass Realty. Need a motion?
So moved.
Second. Mayor.
Yes, good evening, Vice President Katz, members of council and administration. Uh, what you have before you is resolution authorizing the agreement of sale of City Hall between the City of Williamsport and J. Bass Realty. Uh, they are two members of J. Bass are online. Um, unfortunately, they were a little under the weather, uh, and didn't want to risk it uh, coming in person, but we do have I believe John Vasilega and, uh, Chris Doherty, uh, on virtually. Um, obviously, this has been talked about extensively, uh, and so it was on Tuesday reviewed in, uh, finance.
Ms. Mealy.
Uh, yes, this item was reviewed in finance and, uh, Mr. Vasilega and, uh, Mr. Doherty were both kind enough to to be there for finance as well. Um, however, as Mayor Slaughter has pointed out, this has been extensively reviewed and, um, there wasn't a whole lot else to to say about it in finance. Um, uh, you know, I think um, as as, you know, there's, there's been a a lot of discussion about, um, the cities. And and I think one of the things that we had requested, uh, from the mayor uh, when we were talking about reviewing this item was a plan for what we were going to do moving forward, um, to create a a home for city government. And, uh, and that, uh, frankly, it was sort of what my vote on this was was contingent on was, um, was whether or not we we knew what we as a a community were going to do to create a city hall if it wasn't if it wasn't going back to where we came from. Um, so, uh, you know, um, we that, um, is an item I think that we can still discuss with the administration, but, uh, but we're all, we we are all, I believe, at this point aware of, um, both, you know, J. Bass, uh, the the offer that they've made on City Hall, the, um, and the the work that they've done in the city and 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 elsewhere. Um, but, uh, but what sort of does remain to be decided, I suppose, is is what our plan is moving forward, um, from my perspective. I'll defer to other members of city, uh, of the Finance Committee if there are things that I'm forgetting about the discussion on Tuesday.
Any statements? Um, anyone? I I'm, is, is there any statements from anybody else? If not, I do. I have some things to say, Mayor.
Bonnie, yank that closer to you. There's, there's a lot of interference from, uh, uptown.
Can you hear me? Um, it's okay. All right. All right. Um, I'm going to go back in history here, Mayor. Uh, the rain damage from the storm was on seven twenty seven, twenty twenty one. The mayor on August third, twenty twenty one, you had a meeting with department heads to discuss the 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 verbal test results of the air quality. At that point, Joe Girardi condemned the building due to the verbal test results. Moved out of City Hall, nine twenty twenty one twenty one. Mr. Girardi did not see the air quality reports until then. He trusted Adam Winder and the mayor that this was all factual. Received a letter from the insurance company on twelve fifteen, twenty twenty one. They wanted a company to come in and to do an asbestos, um, abatement. On two twenty five twenty two, Travelers Insurance requested more info. Uh, going back as an ad hoc committee was formed on in two twenty twenty, info from that ad hoc was never, uh, forwarded to council, and the mayor pulled it out. On January fourteenth, twenty twenty two, air handlers coil unit on the second floor burst and flooded several rooms on the second floor. The administration and council wanted a cost estimate. At the time, the city engineer, uh, claimed it would be six million to twenty million, and that's how he stated it. On three two, twenty twenty two, Mr. Sanders sent a package from Reynolds from a study that was done in eleven two, twenty seventeen. Total cost for everything, including cost for inflation as of twenty twenty one, was five million, nine hundred and seventy eight thousand, two hundred and eighty one dollars. At that point, I also asked Adam Winder about what damages were covered by the insurance, and he insisted that we were told that it was too late to file a claim. Mayor, we have asked you for plans consistently for for at least two years. Uh, I do have to tell you, worked on some of these things that could be done in the city. Uh, the cost to repair the first floor complete, let me tell you, we did some analysis here, and you were presented this um, about a year, over a year ago. In order to do the first floor, which could be done and house all of all of the offices, including city clerk, the mayor's office, the assistant mayor, uh, controller, treasurer, codes, everything that's needed can be adjusted on the first floor. And doing the cost analysis on this, it would be let me get that, the last one, would be, um, got my own one notes here. It would be a total of uh, two million, a little over two million dollars. If we did the second floor and third floor, which would not have to be done immediately because we would not need to do the elevator right away if we encompassed everything on the first floor. Um, we can start working and finding funding to do the second and third floors if we wanted. Um, like I said, the first floor was two million, one hundred and ninety thousand, ninety five thousand dollars. Uh, the basement and second floor, including the elevator updates, would be nine hundred and eight thousand dollars. The third floor would be a hundred and twenty five thousand dollars. If the HVAC system in the basement and second and third floors need replaced, the estimated cost for the HVAC system would be one million, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Total cost estimate for HVAC system, four million, four hundred and seventy eight thousand dollars. What this all boils down to, if we wanted a rehab um, City Hall, you're talking five million, five hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. And that's the cost estimate of now with product now. And that's, that's what we went through. Uh, as far as maintaining City Hall and fixing up the third, the second, third floor, there have been people already that have approached me. There are nonprofits that would love to rent space in City Hall. There are other people that would like to rent space in City Hall, so therefore we can do things like that also. Uh, and then I have one other statement to make to you. Um, it's a minor complaint, but there's still mail being delivered to two forty five West Fourth Street. And it's and and it's piling up. And I guess address changes have not been sent to everybody because it gets sent back to the post office eventually. So it's a minor problem, but this has presented, you were presented with this plan about oh, a year and a half ago. And you did not want to adjust it. You did not even want to look at it, and I'd like to know why you didn't want to look at it.
Sure, I'm I'm happy to address some of that. Uh, I know we talked about this for quite a while, uh, during the ERC meeting, uh, maybe a few weeks ago, uh, whenever that was. You know, and as I said in ERC, and I won't rehash all of that, um, but I will rehash some of it. Uh, there's, there's a number of factors, um, as we're listening to everyone speak that I'm not hearing about and that we simply can't ignore. You just heard about the 2019 audit. So even if you say only, uh, we'll say only five million dollars, we can't borrow, we can't float a bond, we can't take on debts, any more debt service. We have no idea how we would pay for that debt service. We haven't had audits. We don't know how much money we have in the bank. We brought Tracy in. We could see money's there. It's not audited numbers. We don't know where that money came from. Is it supposed to be there? We have state and federal audits ongoing. We're under state and federal investigations for almost four years now. Our debt is likely, very likely, to increase. We're working with the Park and Authority, other folks. Our debt is most likely going to go up. We can't ignore that. We don't know what our debt will be. We don't even know what our debt is currently. Tracy's been working on this ad nauseam. We've been working on this. She's been working on it for almost a year and a half. We've been at it for almost four years now, and we can't tell you. We did pay ourselves rent in City Hall that was supposed to go to the upkeep and maintenance of the building. We're not sure where that went. Clearly, it didn't go to the upkeep and maintenance. We're here in these buildings where we are currently. It's actually costing us less to be here than what we were paying over there and allegedly misappropriated money, potentially, uh, uh, RVT orders have said that. So there's just, there's a number of factors. I just don't think people either don't want to hear or don't want to take into consideration, if we were to say tomorrow, we're going back into City Hall, we can't ignore the ADA upgrades either. I know Councilman Mackey spoke about that. But the five, six, seven, ten million? Has anybody talked to the police, to the employees, the streets and parks, to others that have actually worked in the buildings? This isn't just Mayor Derek Slaughter saying this. I listen to our employees. I listen to what they're saying. Maybe you've talked to them. Maybe you haven't. I'm not sure. But if you talk to them, you're probably going to hear similar things to what I'm saying about the upkeep and maintenance of the building, about where they are currently as opposed to where they were. It's it's so many items that we just can't we just can't ignore. We also have the FTA special audit that's still ongoing. Tracy and I have been working on that more time than what we would like to admit. I mean, there's, there are so many factors. So if you're waiting on the long-term plan to to that, I don't disagree. But we do need all of that. I can't sit here and say what money do we have so I know we can go back and rehab City Hall for five million? Or we go purchase a building, or we stay where we are. For the moment right now, yes, I do personally believe we need to stay where we are until we figure out what money we're dealing with with what's our debt. How much are we going to owe back to the state and feds as far as transit money that may or may not be in our accounts? Obviously, we're under eight bazillion audits for the last four years that we have not got the results of yet. So all that information is pertinent. It is relevant. I'm not ignoring it. I'm not ignoring anything. I think it's been a very transparent process all throughout. And if anybody does have any financial questions about what we're doing, where we are, Tracy and I are very easily accessible. I don't think anybody's had any trouble finding me, uh, contrary to what I've been hearing. Uh, and my number is 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 public. I've gotten phone calls. That's just the start of it. Once we have, so if we're waiting for that, but in all of those scenarios, in all of those scenarios, for twenty five to thirty people, our police are not going back into City Hall. Chief Snyder's right here, Assistant Chief, well, they're happy to answer questions. I'm sure they would come up here right now and answer questions. That building's not conducive, it never was, to our police department. They can answer those questions. So twenty five to thirty people in a forty thousand square foot building. I mean, I hear a lot about taxpayer money, hear a lot about the the use of it. Yes, as an administration, it's on our belief, our opinion, that twenty five to thirty people for a forty thousand square foot building at this time. Now, maybe once we have everything, we want to wait for all that, but there's no scenario we see that we think five to ten million dollars would make sense, nor do we I I don't know where it would come from unless we raise taxes significantly, uh, to do that. So having said all of that, that's why the administration brought this forward. If you're waiting on all of those factors that come into play to see where we land, I know Councilwoman Emili has asked multiple times, what are we going to owe back to the state and feds as far as transit dollars that were misappropriated or misallocated? We don't know that. So if we're waiting on all of that to see actually what our debt service will be, then, you know, if if council's waiting on that, we're, it's a waiting game. We're in a holding pattern. We don't know that. I can't expedite that any further. I talked to the FTA earlier uh, last week. They're hoping by year end to see what assets we're going to control, train transit one, train transit two, RVT. You may not know, we also pay ourselves rent for streets and parks. We thought we owned that building. Uh, actually, there was some money, state and federal transit money put into that, that, um, or at least state money. Um, so we're actually paying ourselves, paying rent for for streets and parks as well, uh, unfortunately. So there's just, there are a lot of factors that we that we can't ignore. We have, we have to look at those. And so if you're waiting on that, then you know, that's a holding pattern. I can, will be able to very easily work with Tracy and others to formulate a long-term plan as soon as I have all of those, but for right now, I don't have those. And and as I was going to say, I did talk to FTA. They're hoping by year end, uh, to have all of their, uh, documentation completed, have the new number that we we have for the RVT authority that we now have, or Valley Transit Authority, so that we can discuss what will be transferred, what won't. There was some discussion and and, uh, you know, some possibility that some of the buildings may stay with the city. For example, there's been some discussion around uh, the former transportation museum. Obviously, it does not serve any transit purpose whatsoever. It never did. Uh, and so that may stay with us, um, potentially, but I don't want to get the car in front of the horse. That's not, we won't know that until, uh, Penn dot FTA. You know, we we work through that. And so knowing what assets we actually have, known assets are going to remain with us, that's a big piece that we don't know. Uh, and so, once we have that, and 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 then we'll be able to do that, but you know, uh, so yes, I do think staying where we are currently, uh, is the best path forward for the moment, uh, until we have all that. And then we can, we can formulate that long-term pa- plan. But again, I can't expedite any of these audits. I can't expedite Penn dot FTA or anyone else uh, to work any more quickly or the investigations to go any more quickly, uh, than what they already are and and the special audit that we're under. So what we can say and what talking to administration and talking to other folks, our auditors, finance folks and everyone is that you know, no bank is going to say, hey, City of Williamsport, I know you don't know anything about your financial condition, but here's a couple million dollars to that we're going to lend to you or float a bond. So without that, we're just, we're in this holding pattern, and we don't see a scenario that includes City Hall from the administration's perspective. So if that's what you're waiting on, then.
Why did you put City Hall up for sale then, when everything is is out there and there are no answers? That's one of our assets.
Because there's no scenario we see where twenty five to thirty people for that amount of money to go in that building makes sense.
City asset. It's a city asset that you want to sell before, as you say, putting the cart before the horse.
No, but that's not the cart before the horse. What we're saying is, when we reviewed it and we discussed it with Tracy, with the police, with streets and parks, with Co, everyone that we've talked to, we just don't see a scenario where putting twenty five to thirty people in that building.
I just gave you a plan. The twenty five people will be just on the first floor.
But we can't ignore the second and third floor. Nor do I think.
You don't need that. You don't need that right away.
But 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 we also don't think that we're in the business of being landlords either. Hence the reason in county, they could, they have class A office.
You'd want to be a landlord, but you'd rather be a renter.
For the moment, yes. Because it ma- right now, it makes the most sense.
When you have a building city a- sitting over there that has no debt as far as mortgage or anything else, and that has been neglected. And as we're finding out through so many other avenues, that there is financing available for historic building. My God, they even did that in Scranton.
No, well, we can't, no. Scranton, first off, we talked to Delta and uh, Delta and Keller. There's not millions of dollars. Delta and Keller. There's not millions of dollars, and, and they're not on tonight, but you can email and ask them. There's not millions of dollars out there for rehabbing a building. There just isn't. Secondly. There likely would be some type of match to that. Thirdly, we did pay ourselves rent at City Hall. It did not go to where it was supposed to go. I don't know where it went. We actually pay less here, so.
Where did that rent go? Because we were still renting, oh, paying rent, and when you were mayor. But where did that go? You were. Finance Department at that point.
That's, well, yeah, what we're, that's what we're, we're working through right now.
But where did that money go that?
We can't tell you right now.
But you were mayor at that point.
Bonnie, can I get into the queue to continue the conversation? Whenever, I, I think Ms. Millie had her hand up first, but just. And I apologize to interrupt you. I, it, it's, it's, it's hard to notify you remotely, so.
Like you said.
Oh, do you want Liz to go first?
I, I think, I mean, it's up to Ms. Millie. I think her hand was up before I mine.
I, I think we'll, probably I'll be talking about this for a minute, so I'm not sure that the turns thing is all that important right now, Adam, but. I, I think the, the point that I'm making about all this, Derek, is that it's one thing to say there are a bunch of factors. There are a bunch of answers that we don't have before we can make a move. But it's another thing to say we're not going to plan for the move we can make. If we're waiting, i- if. My understanding of your intent is that for the next four years, we should basically stay here. In a holding pattern, and then we can see what we can do. And, and to me, that is also not a valid argument. There's, there, there is a, there is a middle ground there. There has to be. Because I, I mean, because we can't stay here. We're, we're operating, we, we have, we have, we have. Employees of the city working in like five different locations. If somebody wants to get in touch with City Hall, they don't know where to call. They don't know where to go. We could, we could fix that at least in a short-term manner. By moving into the county building where we could at least unify all of our administrative offices in our codes department. Which I think might be more desirable to me in the short term than remaining in this particular location. But that's, that's kind of a separate argument. I think what I'm saying is. There seems to be a general agreement that we need an actual City Hall at some point. And I say an actual City Hall, not the City Hall, because I'm not putting any. You know, I, I'm not betting on any of the ponies in this race necessarily in terms of what our best location is. But what I am saying is, I don't think we can say we're not going to think about it. We're just gonna, we're just going to hang out in this situation, which is making. You know, our, our government operate less efficiently and our citizens less able to, to get the responses they need. From our government until we achieve some level of clarity on our financial situation. I think, I think we need to move both of those projects. Forward simultaneously. We need to say, okay, the FTA and the state are working on figuring out what. Is going on with, you know, and, and we are working on figuring out. What happened with the transit system and, and what our obligations are there and what we might own and what we don't. But simultaneously, we are going to look at our options for a location for a permanent. City Hall. We are going to evaluate what the most cost-effective of those options is, or what the best of those options is. There, there are, there are arguments being made in both directions. Part of that, obviously, will be determined by what. Financial power we can bring to play in the final analysis. But none of that is, is. Antithetical to not knowing our financial position. We can explore what our financial obligations might be to find ourselves in a better home that better suits our needs. And to find the police in a better place that better suits their needs while we wait to figure out precisely. We know what our needs are. We don't know what our financial position is, but I don't think that we can wait to, we can wait until we. Have all of the answers to move on the larger issue. Because I, I, I understand that you believe that this current situation that we have for. Arrangement of the city administration is functional, but, but it is my opinion, and it is the opinion, it is the opinion of other people that I've talked to. That it is not functioning well, and that we would be best to be attempting to remove. To remove ourselves from our current situation as soon as we can. I understand that may not be possible now. Although, like I said, I, you know, I, I do think that if we were looking for a multi-year home for the city administration. We would be wiser to perhaps relocate to the county building. When we discussed last year, at the end of last year, the whole idea of not picking up and moving. My understanding had been that we were discussing like a, well, we're not going to pick up and move when we, when we, when we might find something, figure out a permanent place for ourselves in the next year. And that makes sense to me. Yeah, let's not pick up and move. If we're talking about being, about the city administration being effectively homeless. For the next three or four years, then we need to find a place where the city administration is at least all homeless in the same location. And not spread out across the city, to my way of thinking. And I, I guess, the. The prime, the primary sentiment that I want to bring to bear here is that. I, I think that we, that we need to move forward on determining what our long-term plan is for a, for a City Hall. If it is not a return to our old City Hall. I may or may not have my own personal issues with that, but I, I think that we need to be examining our options and figuring out what those options are. And, and figuring out from the sounds of things, what it is that we think that we need as a city. It sounds as though my beliefs about what constitutes an adequate home for a city government. And yours may be different. And I would guess that all of us have different beliefs about that. But we need to come to some sort of consensus there. So I guess it would be my suggestion. When we're discussing this item today, that I am not necessarily proposing to. Postpone a decision on it indefinitely, but I would like to think, see us make a little bit more progress on the process of figuring out. What we are going to do in the long-term, what we are going to do when we have the money, if we have the money. With whatever money we can bring to bear, you know, answering those questions at the same time that we are answering the financial questions. So that at some point, and hopefully sooner rather than later, we're ready to spring and we're ready to, to figure out a next step as a city government. Because, you know, all of us spent several years in a holding pattern during the pandemic. And I think we can all agree that the best definition for it would be purgatory. And I don't. I, you know, I, I don't wish that on our, on our city employees and on our city elected officials for any longer than necessary. All right. Thanks, Adam, for giving me the floor. I think I've said my piece.
Am I able to just say one thing? I think most, if not all of you, did walk through and explore one option that we are looking at. I don't think it's appropriate to say that publicly tonight, because we're not there yet. But you're at least aware of one option that we're looking at. We've talked about a few other things. We did explore the county building. We walked over there. It was half of the. Second or third floor, I forget. It was half of it. It, it wouldn't work. So we did look, we did explore that. There's no, there's just no way that would work. So. Anyway, I, I just want, I did want to respond to that and President Yoder, sorry.
Go ahead, Adam.
No, no worries. Thank you for that. You, you, you know, Ms. Millie brought up a number of really good points that resonate with me. That I would generally agree with, but, but aside from that, you know, I, I just, a, a, a couple of questions that, that come to mind for you, Mayor Slaughter. When, when you were kind of talking through. You know, why? Your, your rationale for why you believe being where we're at is the best solution at the moment. You referenced looking at multiple different scenarios. What were those scenarios and why are those other scenarios better than? Going back into City Hall? Because, because it, and, and I ask that because it appears to me. Or, or my perception, and my perception could very well be wrong. My perception is there was some analysis that went into that. What, what was that? What are those options that you looked at?
Well, as we were saying, the factors, one, where we are currently. Again, depending on what the state and federal government comes back and says, this will play into it. If we end up keeping Trade and Transit One, Trade and Transit Two, the Transportation Museum, et cetera, that's one. I think some potential options have been presented, I know, have been presented to council in an executive session. Given the confidentiality of public safety, some of those we can't discuss right here. Again, there's, there's definitely at least one place you all have walked through that we've looked at. But again, those scenarios, I can't sit here and say. You know, what that's going to be long-term at this point. We're, and I, I think, just in my heart of hearts, we're going to fund the administration. And, and maybe a few members of council are just going to fundamentally disagree on this. But that's where we are, and that's what we think from twenty-five to thirty folks. For example, if we are, if we do get, end up keeping the Transportation Museum. And we're able to build the workout facilities there and other things that are in the police contract that we need to do. That, that would play into the plan. Again, once we know what our debt will be, once we know, so I don't. You know, we can look at this stuff, but we're not going to go out and pay fifty, seventy-five thousand dollars for engineered drawings or design and engineering. Until we have some of these answers, we just don't think that that is prudent or that it makes sense. You know, and again, I think we're going to fundamentally disagree on this. I think we already have. But that's our stance. And, and again, Chief Snyder, Assistant Chief Bolt, the police department. You know, they have some plans and some that have been. Tentatively explored. But for them to remain where they are, we've also have even done a, a, we don't have the results, because again, we're not going to pay, I think, seventy-five grand at this point yet. But we've done some space utilization studies. And, and things of that nature. So we are exploring it. It's not like we're just sitting on our hands, but we're not going to spend a whole bunch of money. At, at this time until we know what our financial condition is. And I, I know we can, I guess, try to ignore that. But that's sort of at the crux of the whole, of the whole issue. On top of the twenty-five to thirty employees. And so. You know, none of this, we can just, you know, we can't just sit here and ignore any one thing. And, and again, not to. I, I don't want to speak for Councilman Mackey, but I know the ADA thing comes, comes into play as well. I mean, we'd have to, there's, there's no if, ands or buts about that. That we'd have to do some of those improvements. So we just, we're taking everything into consideration. That, that's why the administration moved forward with, with the recommendation.
Two more questions. So you referenced a couple of options that we, we are not at a place to talk about. But what, what do the costs associated with those options look like? Do you know that answer?
We don't yet, because we didn't, we're not even in a place to negotiate.
Okay. And. My, my, my last question here. I, I mean, look, I'm not going to sit here and say that the uncertainty of these investigations is, is, i- it's an issue. Right? We've, we've openly talked about that. But that, that is not precluding us from tackling some of these bigger issues we've got. I mean. So my, 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 my question here is, why are we planning to continue progress on the levy? A project which is probably ten to fifteen times the size. Of City Hall, but. Very, very substantial to city government and the community.
Sure. So that's, that's a good question. My response, that'd be one we got, as you're aware, Congressman Keller. Was able to get us congressionally-directed spending in an amount of eight million dollars. And I believe council allocated. I forget the exact amount, but council has allocated some of our ARPA dollars towards that. So that eight million gets us a very good start, and I would reiterate thank yous to Congressman Keller and Senator Casey. For their work and helping us to secure that. And also, this year, Congressman Musser. I believe had an allocation, initially, you know, it's, he recommended it. It's not been approved, of course. I think we all know the federal budget situation, but Congressman Musser is going to bat for us for the levy as well. And so at this point, that would be why I would say we could continue with the levy. Given the, the fact that we were able to secure that eight million, or that, again, Congressman Keller was able to secure that for us in the county to, to work on that.
So. A- a- and here's the reason I ask that, okay? We're asking, I'm asking that and, and trying to make a point here. We are actively planning on addressing that issue. We are actively planning on. Building out governance models that can fund it long-term. We are actively planning out projects. That we will fund a multitude of ways, both from federal and state grants. But some of it's going to come eventually, and I would think sooner than later, from general fund revenue. Some of it's going to come from the savings mechanism that we've implemented from our own individual taxpayer coffers. And, and, and my point here is. Both of these are big challenges, and I'm not going to sit here and say that the levy is, is, or City Hall is equal to that, right? You can make an argument either way, but we can't, we're, we're planning for a handful of large issues. We're, we're doing the same thing with Graffius Run. We're, we're using capital projects funded by general fund revenue. To implement solutions that our Public Works Department is coming up with. Good solutions, by the way, and great work that our Public Works team and our administration is leading. There's, I just don't understand or see a reason why we cannot replicate that process for this issue, okay? And, 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 and I'll echo Councilwoman Millie's sentiments. I'm not going to sit here and say. Staying is the right thing. There's a handful of scenarios that logically make sense to me that would involve selling the facility. Okay? We don't know the answers to them, okay? And, and we have repeatedly worked and, and, and asked to have answers to those. And so. I'm very uncomfortable selling this facility. I, you could make an argument, and, and by all means, correct me if I'm wrong, but. I would think. With financial uncertainty, that you would want to hold on to as many assets as you can. To ensure you've got collateral and backing to solidify your financial position. If we're talking about having to potentially borrow a lot of money, I would think that having as many assets as you can. Would aid those efforts in the future. And so, and City Hall is a financial asset. We have a proposal in front of us for half a million and, and, and change. There's a market value associated with that. That's a substantial amount of money when you look at the grand scheme of assets. So. I, I, I respect the, the. The, the pause that our financial uncertainty is, 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 is leading you to Mayor Slaughter. But I would agree with Councilwoman Millie. I do not think that it is a reason to hinder progress. On solving the biggest challenges facing the city. City Hall is one of those. A functional City Hall is, is foundational. To an effective government operating and enabling us to solve and continue to solve these bigger challenges as well. Now, we've got a great proposal in front of us, a- and, and I would thank Jay Baz publicly. For participating in this process. They're investing in the city. We're, we're very, very fortunate, and, and they've expressed a lot of patience with us as we've worked through this. You know, we've, 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 we've worked with, with Fish Real Estate. They've been very patient with us and have done a wonderful job for us. But I don't think we should vote to sell this. I think we should table this, and we should find the money. And figure out the solution expediently. And if the solution includes selling City Hall, and we have a consensus at that point, we should do it then. But until then. I just don't see how it's a good idea to do this right now. I'll, I'll, I'll yield the floor, Bonnie. Thank you for the, for the floor.
Anyone else? Yes, Mr. Allison.
When we got our, in, in Finance Committee meeting, when. We talked about the audit. We, there, the audit came with. No, no judgment on it. There, there was no opinion, no legal opinion. Because. They said. They don't know what they don't know. Within the numbers, the finances. And what they were dealing with. And this conversation has been ongoing within the community and on councils as well. There's some things that, that we don't know. There's some things we think we know, and there's some things that, that we do all know. I think what we're lacking is a, I, I do agree a hundred percent. We need to begin moving the ball forward. Without, without doing that, we, we are going to have a hard time working our way through this. And when you begin a, a journey like that, when you start out, you may not, you don't know, in this case, exactly where, where you're going to go. But you won't know anything unless you start walking, unless you start moving that direction. And and you can always adjust. And I think we're, we're capable of doing that. But, but we need a consensus and we don't have it. We don't have it on council. We have different voices in the community. And so I agree with what Council President Yoder said, that we should table this, and I make a motion that we table it.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, that came from Adam. Mr. Mackey?
Yeah, just a couple of things. You know, I, I hear a lot, I'm hearing a lot about the mayor's plan or lack of plan and how no, and some of us aren't comfortable with where we're at today with that plan. I just think it's important to remind this body that in January, we voted five to one. Five yes, one no. Councilman Mealy, or Councilwoman Mealy was not present.
I'll take Councilman Mealy, you know.
The council person, Mealy, to, to, to hire Fish Real Estate and sell this building. So I, I don't, you know, five yes, one no to, to sell the building in January. I, I guess now some of us have changed our minds and I, and I guess that's okay. I, I, I keep, I keep hearing a lot about the ad hoc committee and it does bother me just a little bit that this whole issue of ADA compliance seems to just be getting glossed over. To, for the record, the, the repairs needed at City Hall are not cosmetic. But let's just be very clear about that. We have a thirty-one page report that states specifically, right down to the very last measurement, that the repairs needed at City Hall are well beyond cosmetic. So I just really want, if anything, tonight, can we please just stop saying that the repairs to City Hall are cosmetic because it's simply not true? The ad hoc committee wrapped up its investigation, if that's what you want to call it, in January or February of 2021, eight months before the ADA compliance study even started. So I still fail to, to, to understand how that, those findings are even just a, a little bit relevant. All of those numbers are completely irrelevant now, in my opinion. Councilwoman Katz, you just referred to a study. Could you remind me again what year that was from? I thought I heard twenty seventeen.
Study was twenty seventeen.
Twenty seventeen.
They did the cost factors and they included all ADA requirements in that also. That was, that was, that was.
This was in twenty seventeen.
But they were doing the ADA.
That was six years before the ADA compliance study was even done. So I, I, again, my, my point is, if there's anything we can get straight tonight is that the repairs needed at City Hall are not cosmetic by any stretch. And that we, we did vote five to one to sell this building and is selling this building not getting the ball rolling on a, on a plan? I mean, is, is, is the, is the intent to now sit on this building for a couple, another year? We're just going to tell the city, the, the residents of Williamsport that we're going to heat this building for another year on, on, on their dime because we can't make up our minds on even whether or not to sell it or, or not sell it.
Yeah, John, and I thought about that exactly. I'm, I'm glad you brought that up because I, I thought back. And the context that I remember for myself personally was, I was in favor of seeing what value we could get for selling that building at that time. Not committed to selling it regardless of of what, what we might get for it. Even if it was more than that, but to see, to see if there was any interest at all in somebody buying City Hall. But then I, I think it illustrates somewhat how over a period of time the plan can change if, if there's other relevant factors coming in. And, and for me, a, a lot of it has to do with the financial uncertainty of our audit, our recent audit and going forward. But we keep going back over the same issues and, and I, I still think it comes back to needing a consensus and where we can iron these things out. There's been a lot of back and forth about a lot of questions tonight, and it's good that they're asked in public so that everybody can hear it. But I think i- if we're going to be successful, we're going, and I've said this before, we're, we're going to have to be not necessarily, and, and not that anybody's taken it to this point, but, but instead of adversarial, we're going to have to be compatible in a way that we can work through our differences. And maybe we agree on more than we think. We won't know until we start having those kind of conversations.
I, I would just say then, if the, if the intent was to just see if there was interest in someone purchasing the building, then I'm not sure why we had people make bids and open them publicly and here we are. But I mean, that, that, that's not how, I mean, if, I mean, I've heard a lot of people make comparisons to City Hall and their own house. But I mean, if, if I want to know how much my house is worth, I don't put it on the market and hire a realtor and have people come and walk through it and then accept bids and then say, actually, I didn't really want to sell it in the first place. I just wanted to see how much it was worth. At, at, at some point, I guess the process, if that was the intent, then the process probably should have stopped before we ever accepted any bids on the building and opened them publicly. I, that, that to me just doesn't make any sense and.
Maybe I, I phrased that wrong. That, that wasn't my total intent. Because we did agree that there was possibility to sell it, and we talked about deed restrictions and, and all those things. But things have changed somewhat recently in the intervening time, I think.
I suppose we'll agree to disagree on that. Yeah. As far as I can tell, we still only have twenty-some employees, so that hasn't changed. So, but I, oh.
Anybody else? Yes, Ms. Mealy.
Yeah, the, the, the only other thing that I would say is that my proposal or why I would vote to table, John, is not to leave the building hanging in limbo for another year. In part because I don't think that that is a healthy thing for a structure if it can be avoided. I, I don't, I don't think that we want to, to have a vacant spot there on the corner for any longer than absolutely necessary. And I would prefer to make, to see us make a decision of some description relatively quickly. Adam Yoder, you'll have to perhaps help me remember, but it seems to me that one of the recommendations of the ad hoc committee might have actually been to have an impartial third party evaluate the situation and make a recommendation just for City Hall, but for a, an eventual final home for a city government?
No, the recommendation, no, no, you're, you're not, well, so I, I say no. You, I, I, I'll explain why you're saying what you're saying, okay? The recommendation was to stay in City Hall, but it included hiring a third party design build firm to finalize additional scope that may not have been captured through the ad hoc process and, 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 and lead that effort. And, and what you're talking about in hiring a third party unbiased entity is kind of in line with. So.
So all wrong, but perhaps not entirely inaccurate. Well, all completely inaccurate, but perhaps not entirely wrong. There you go. But anyway, I, I, I guess partly what I'm feeling like is if, if we, I have personally sat on two committees that looked at the City Hall issue, so to speak. And both, both committees concluded that our most cost effective, as well as our best option, was to stay in our former City Hall. That said, I'm perfectly willing to admit that both of those committees might have been wrong, but it does baffle me a little bit that we keep discussing it. We keep discussing it and it seems as though nobody actually ever looks at this from an impartial perspective where no one has a dog in the fight. So it might be my suggestion that we look at the idea of resolving this issue by bringing someone into the, by bringing someone into play who is not a member of, of city administration or city council and, and evaluating the costs and the, and the alternatives that we have in the community. And, and, and then, and then we agree that that will create the consensus that we need to move forward when the time is right, when we have the fine, when we have the funding in place. And ideally, that recommendation would perhaps include funding resources available for something like this. Because as we've all just discussed, it is perfectly okay for us to move forward on things where we have grant money. So perhaps, or, or, or some sort of other funding available outside the city. So if we could be looking for grant money to deal with, with our lack of a, a City Hall situation, that might put us in a better position to to begin the process and, and, and make a real decision here.
And, and Liz, to kind of piggyback off of your point, well, I shouldn't really say piggyback off of your point, but John, I think to answer, you know, a little, respond a little bit to your commentary. You know, I, I think the one thing that is consistently missing here is that we don't have a plan for where we're going long term. And, and while I'm not going to sit here and disagree with some of the arguments you're making, you know, one thing that we have publicly asked, and we publicly asked this on the night that we voted to hire Fish Real Estate was, you know, th- this is not a bad exercise to go through. Okay. We can do this in conjunction with finding a long-term solution for City Hall. Right? The second part of that has not happened. That's the, that's, that's the big challenge for me, right? We've got direct feedback from a third party on just a lot of uncertainty with our financial position, right? That is more solidified than it was when we hired this firm. So you, you know, Randy had referenced some things that have changed. And I'm not going to put words in his mouth, but for me, reinforcing his point, especially that financial one, that has been firmed up very recently and is a part of the influence for me personally. Right? And, and Councilman Allison brought up some additional, just really good points about finding a consensus, actually think listening to one another, being open minded. I'll sit here and fully admit, I have not done a good job of that at times. Okay. I've learned a lot through this process and, and really over the past month. But, but, and I'll leave with this. When, when I open my ears, when I open my mind and I've actually listened to everybody, the public, the mayor, all of the members of City Council, I've heard very good points on, on each side of the issue. John, we've talked about this. There's parts of, of your rationale that I absolutely agree with. We've talked about that. I know there's parts of my rationale that you agree with to a degree as well. You know, what we're missing is a consensus, okay? And we, we, we need to all go through that process of actually listening to one another and find that consensus. We don't have it tonight. So I'll, I'll, I'll leave with that. I just, Randy, your, your, your comments really resonated with me and I, and I couldn't agree more. So, and I, I really appreciate you bringing those up.
We do have a motion on the floor from Randy to table this. I don't think we got, we didn't have a second, did we?
We did. I seconded it.
That's right. That's right. The screen. Any other questions? Yes, Mr. Glazier.
Thank you very much. I, I apologize. I don't want to drag this out any longer than we've all. I don't think a majority of you are just here to see all of us for any real reason. You know, I, I'm sitting back, I'm listening to everything and I, and I feel I need to explain where my vote's going to come from to everybody. Everyone here has a right to know. You're all taxpayers, you're all constituents, you're all residents. And just so every one of you know, we have been writing down your notes. We've been writing down your concerns. And, you know, I, there, there's a lot of good questions here. You know, to piggyback off of what Council Woman Mealy has said, what Councilman Allison has said, what Councilman Mackey, Councilman Yoder, what all of them have said. There's, there's, you know, logic and cogent reasoning behind their decisions. I understand that. However, I have too many questions to feel comfortable with this. And right off the bat, I do want to say thank you to Fish Real Estate for doing the job that they did, that they were hired to do. They, they were hired to bring us people that were interested to buy our building. They did that. So certainly if this passes, if it doesn't pass, whatever it may be, it's no reflection on them not doing their job. The next thing I'd like to do is apologize, at least for myself, to Jay Bass and to Mr. Butters with Old City Hall. It's not fair to keep you, any of you in the wind. It's not fair to keep any of you waiting. But I can't make a decision on this. I can't move forward with an idea to sell City Hall unless I think that we have a lot of our questions answered. You know, I've, I've listened to every single person. We all want to see a plan. We all want to know a viability plan and the associated costs. I heard them all. I think there's a lot of other good questions that need answered. Mr. Butters, I wrote down every single one that you brought up regarding the criteria and scoring for whose bid was chosen. I think we need to have some clarity on that. There was Mr. Logue, deed restrictions. I would like to hear some more clarity on that. You know, there's so many other things that we need clarity on. If we fail to plan, we are ultimately planning to fail. And Mr. Mayor, I don't envy the situation that you're put in with the audits, with everything else that's going on. It, they're, they're tough decisions. With the audits, with everything else that's going on, it, they're, they're tough decisions. However, I personally would like to see a little bit more effort and a little bit more action taken. We have a whole room of professionals here that are willing to give their expertise, to give their help, dedicate their time. Someone had spoken earlier and said, all we have to do is ask. I believe Mr. Visco's in the audience. He's done a study before. I think if we requested their help, they would help, they would offer that help to us. Or whatever the other future plans may be that don't involve us moving into City Hall. But at least then we'll have some clear definitive answers. Because not knowing, I, 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 I just don't feel that unless we have answers and a clear plan and clear vision is, is responsible. We as the elected officials that represent each and every single one of you, whether you're a resident, whether you're a business owner, whatever it may be, I don't think that that is the best plan moving forward. Something else I'd like to know, if there's grant funding out there. Mr. Mayor alluded, uh, uh, you had mentioned earlier that Delta and Keller had said that there's not much money available for rehabbing a building. I would personally like to see something presented to us factually to tell us if there is or if there is not. Um, I know it is a historic building. It's an old building. So it may not translate per- perfectly, but I do know Jersey Shore Borough has a, a new building up there. And I say new, for the record, that I believe cost them somewhere around twelve million dollars. And my understanding is like eighty percent of that has been funded through grant funding. Now again, that may not translate to a historic building, but I still would like to see what is out there. There's too many ifs. There's too many unknowns. The others, the other thing, Mr. Mayor, you brought up that I think is, is very good to mention here. Congressman Keller did an excellent job in getting money for us for the levy. I wonder if we've approached Congressman Muser or any of other senators and asked them what help they may be able to give us toward rehabbing City Hall. Again, those are things that I would like to see. I, I have those questions on. Um, and I just don't feel I can make a decision on that until we have those questions answered. I think that we all want the same thing for our city. I think we all want to see our city succeed, grow positively in their, in the appropriate direction. We want to embrace the future, but also remember our past, whether that be through our historic buildings, our, our architecture, all of it. But I just, I, I don't think that it's a responsible decision for us tonight to vote to sell City Hall until we have those questions answered. And again, I personally feel it's necessary to say thank you to Fish, but also to apologize to all of, to uh, to Jay Bass and to Mr. Butters. Cause it's not fair, and I personally would understand one hundred percent if you withdrew your bid. But again, there's questions that I feel that you should have answers to as well. One other thing that I feel the public should be made aware of and has a right to know, and anybody is welcome to disagree with me if they want. But as it was mentioned earlier by one of the people that was granted limited, limited courtesy of the floor, that building belongs to the taxpayers. That's the people's building. That's not my building. That's not council's building. That's not the mayor's building. That's the people's building. And as such, I think the appraisal should be made public. I think you all have a right to know. And until that's done, until that's done, I don't think that it's responsible for us to make a decision. So again, Mr. Mayor, I, I understand the position you're in. I don't envy it one bit. But I just don't think it wise at this point in time with what I consider to be too many unknown factors to vote to sell it. So at this point in time, motion to table, I certainly agree with. That's, I apologize. Somebody actually thought we were gonna be done by nine o'clock tonight. But I'm done speaking my piece. I hope you all understand where my vote's coming from. And I hope you all understand that every single one of us at our core, we truly do have the best interest of the taxpayers, the business owners, the residents. We all have your best interest at heart. Said, I think we all agree on the goals for our city. It's just how we get there is where we may differ. But the choices we make are definitely in your best interests. So thank you. And thank you all for being here.
Yes, Mr. Bider.
Uh, a few of you in the room tonight attended uh, an ERC meeting uh, about two weeks ago that was here held uh, in person uh, downstairs in um, Janice Frank's office. And I appreciate that you were here. I appreciate that the mayor attended and he did share some more information um, as well. Um, what I would just like to say to the residents that are here, uh, and the ones that have been active, the ones that have reached out to council people already and have expressed your concern that you continue to do so. What I would like to do um, from a council perspective, and we'll be talking with this, but I just want the public to hear this now, is use that time uh, with ERC committees until it's appropriate uh, or it's handed to another committee that we continue to have these open discussions. Um, so that way we can continue to get more feedback from the residents. And there will be times when that feedback uh, will be taken under advisement, and there will be times when there are answers that you are given that you may not like. Um, so I would like to make sure that that is out in the open for everyone. I do appreciate, again, you all being here. Everything that everybody on council has said has been spot on, whether it has been from Councilwoman Mealy or Councilman Mackey with the disagreements. So you have to understand that this is a very difficult situation that we are in. Uh, and I will just add personally, I do not feel comfortable liquidating an asset with current investigations. That situation also arose before when RVTA came to us and asked the city to essentially sign over Elm Park and a few other buildings on West Third Street uh, that are under investigation currently. We did not do that at the time. They are still in the city's possession. And I think that was a good move. Uh, so we will continue to do that now.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mrs. Frank, for the vote.
This is the motion to table.
The table.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
No.
Mr. Pelisi.
Yes.
Mr. Bider.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes.
Six to, six to one.
Six to one to table.
I, I thank you very much, everyone. Okay, next item on the agenda is gonna be on number seven, Mrs. Frank. Thank you all for coming.
An ARPA transfer ordinance number eight and final reading.
Mr. Mayor, this is up, it's up to you again.
Yep.
Can we say hi?
What's that?
Can we say hi?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Hello again. Uh, Vice President Katz, members of Council Administration. Um, this is the one that was before you. Yeah, I can wait a few minutes. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Good night all. Thank you for coming.
We still have an exciting.
Have a drink for us out there.
We still have an exciting fire services agreement if anybody wants to stick around and hear that.
Really? No, no takers. It is an exciting fire services agreement. Exactly. But even Chief Honster's lost his enthusiasm out there.
What's that?
But even Chief Honster may have lost his enthusiasm over the last two hours.
Chief Honster, are you with us yet? Are you with us? Okay. Okay, Mayor, I think we're all set. Was that someone who's here for a reason?
Chris Kenyon. That was the one that worked on uh, City Hall stuff.
Okay, just wanted to know. Okay.
You know what, Bonnie, actually, while Chris is here, might we ask him a question or two? I, I, I'm sorry, guys. I know we just walked away from this issue. But uh, yeah, Chris, I apologize. Had I known you were here, and I should have recognized it actually, um, uh, we might have asked you to speak to Mr. Butters' points um, specifically concerning the, the idea that we have to choose the highest bidder in this uh, situation.
Sure. A- as I've outlined, um, for several of you that I've spoken to in the past, um, the first class city code is actually very clear on, on what your role is. And in, your role is not actually to make a determination relative to the qualifications of the actual bidder. When you are selling city assets like that, especially real property, um, when you advertise, you advertise a bid for the highest bidder. Um, your obligation is actually to obtain the highest price for the real estate. It's not to consider who's going into that building and what they are gonna be doing with it. I know it is obviously relevant and you think of those things. It's natural. Uh, it's a natural reaction to the process, but unfortunately, to take the all of that out of it, of the process, they, the state legislature said that that is not your role, that you take the highest bid. And then you let whoever takes over the property do what they want with it, unfortunately. So i- i- it's an unfortunate aspect of the statute, but you cannot change that fact. Um, otherwise you're, you're stepping outside your jurisdiction as a city council.
So as, I guess to follow up on that, a handful of things. Um, first off, would, uh, if can we within the request or proposal, say that we put out for a building, put a number of requirements that must be met, for instance, the preservation of the structure? Potentially, potentially the particular use of the structure that might, that can, that is to say, can we make those requirements to submit a bid?
Absolutely. So there's nothing that prevents you from actually putting qualifiers in those bids.
Okay. But once the bids come in, as long as they've met those qualifiers, price is the only.
Correct.
Uh, right. Okay.
So you can remember, I mean, i- it's a balancing test when you're actually putting out for bid, when you start doing things like that, is, is that might decrease the price of the bid.
It would obviously, under any circumstances, be fair then to reject all bids if they didn't meet the financial threshold that we were hoping.
Correct. There, there is, there is nothing that prevents you. So had, had you, I, I know you have appraisal. I'll, I'll be candid. I have not seen that appraisal, so I'm not, I'm not gonna pre- pretend I know what that number is, but say, say you had an appraisal for six million dollars and all of your bids came in at a million dollars. You have every right to reject those bids because they haven't met that price threshold. Um, there's no limitations on your ability to reject the bids.
Got it.
Uh, other than if you're going to reject bid, the bids, you'd reject them all for, for the same reason, so.
Got it. Okay. Um, so Vince, to your point, I think that the, the appraisal also plays a role there.
I, and, and to Councilman Pelisi's point, that I mean, not to the laborer say why it's not released. I, I'm sure you've had these discussions. The reason why you don't release appraisals is because you also don't want to create a situation where there's maybe an unfair event. Yeah, you get people that, they say that, well, they know your bid's that high, so they, they might go lower. It, there's a confidentiality aspect to that and where you're trying to make sure you get the highest bids. You want people to think they know what that number is and, and do their independent homework versus giving them a price point where you, where you're gonna go.
Got it. Let me ask you this. Now that the bids are in, it doesn't have the disqual- disqualifying.
It does. Yes, ma'am. It actually does. And to, it, it does not become from a right to know standpoint and following that aspect of the law. It does not have, you don't have the ability to release it until you've actually accepted a bid and closed on that property, because now you've taken out that competitive edge. Remember, once you close, then, then that appraisal just becomes another document within your art, within your uh, purview that you have to release and anybody can know what that price is. That appraisal is because you've already obtained the highest price that you were able to get at that point in time. And you've closed on it. If you haven't closed, there's always the potential of a breach or the, the buyer decides they're gonna walk away from it, the deal.
Any other questions for anybody? If not, thank you very much for stating, staying your answered question.
You're welcome. Have a great evening, everybody. That was good to see.
Okay, there's, okay, Mayor, you are up.
Okay.
You got it? Okay.
All right, we are doing uh, eight first, right? Seven?
So we're doing ARPA transfer ordinance eight.
Yep, okay. So, good evening again, uh, Vice President Katz, members of Council Administration. This is the one that was condensed. It, it was the one that uh, Councilwoman Mealy asked to update with recreation. We have done that, uh, brought it out of the recreation budget, uh, which was uh, what, seven forty-five, five hundred? The one minor other adjustment that we had to make, um, initially John Sander had uh, community development uh, at a a hundred thousand of the project. They're actually only at ninety-five thousand. So if you see the eighteen thousand went to twenty-three thousand, just that five thousand difference there. And that's, that's the reason, the rationale for that. Um, other than that, the only change uh, was requested by Councilwoman Mealy uh, was to take it actually out of the recreation budget, which we had plenty in there, as you can see, and we still have uh, plenty of money in that uh, future project line item.
Any questions by anyone? I, oh, I need a motion. I can take a motion on this.
Well, just quick, Norm, do, we don't need to like amend this resolute, this ordinance to substitute this new one, do we?
If you're changing any of the numbers.
We are.
Yeah.
We are.
Okay. So I'll make, I'll make a motion for one thing.
Okay, go ahead.
And then I guess, okay, um, and then.
I'll second the motion.
Thanks. And then, yeah, Eric did it too. Uh, and then secondly, I'll, I'll make a motion to substitute this, this new ordinance norm, this revised ordinance for the, for the one that we were previously working with.
I'll second that.
Reading is different to what you're proving today.
And this is gonna be the final reading.
This is the final reading, so.
But that's enough as far as wording. I'll make a mo- motion to substitute this revised ordinance provided by the administration for the one that was currently on the table, correct, or on the.
Yes.
Agenda. Okay, excellent.
And we have a second.
Feeling very clear tonight. Oh, we had a second from Adam, I believe.
There's no other questions? Mrs. Frank, we'll take the vote.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Pelisi.
Yes.
Mr. Bider.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes.
And you don't, Mrs.
No, now you're back with the main, on the motion.
No, one main motion now. So I need a motion?
No, no, you, you've already done.
We have a motion.
We have a motion.
Yeah, I need the vote. That's right.
Yeah. I made two motions right there. I mean, it was too fast, you know?
Uh, and, and any questions for anybody? If not, yeah, no, okay. Take a vote, Mrs. Frank.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Pelisi.
Yes.
Mr. Bider.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes.
Motion gathered. We agreed, all agreed. Next one on the agenda is transfer ordinance number five.
Final reading.
The final reading. Mayor.
You need a motion.
So move.
Second.
All together now.
Yes, good evening again, Vice President Count, uh, Katz, excuse me, uh, members of Council Administration, and President Yoder, sorry. Not seeing you in person. I forget you on.
President. No worries. It's messing with me on the, on the remote end too, so it's all good.
Um, so members of Council Administration, so this is the final reading of the uh, that we're putting it back in to cover the rent for the remainder of the year.
Uh, any questions?
Bonnie. So.
Adam.
Go for it, Adam. It's okay.
Sorry, go ahead.
Keep a little bit.
No, 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 no. I, I have my hand up, but you should get started. Just, just go for it.
Go ahead, Adam.
Oh, okay. Well, I, I was just simply gonna say, um, you know, I think based on some of the discussion that we had during the City Hall line, uh, item on the agenda, I think it might make sense to table this for two weeks, um, to. Um, I think it might make sense to table this for two weeks, um, to see if. We can scrape some funds together out of the general fund to, um. Put in, um, whether it's legislative contingency or or creating a line item or or however the mechanism would work. To look at hiring a third party firm, um, to move fast on looking at the city hall issue. Um, I think we, I think we could probably figure something out within two weeks. In addition to that. Um, maybe even get a scope RFP together. Um, you know, maybe we can pick a council committee to kind of lead this effort. Um, you know, ERC has been. Had it had a dialogue with the public, um, related to the city hall issue. Maybe it makes sense for them to lead that effort. Um, but. Just, just, just a thought I wanted to throw out to everybody, uh, given the nature of the discussion, we just had a pass probably hour and twenty minutes.
If if I can just ask a question, uh, really quick, uh. When is rent technically due? And if if we table this, is this going to cause a problem with us being able to pay the rent?
You're gonna be out of compliance with your budget starting in October if you don't approve this.
Okay.
Did we pay the rent, though? I was of the impression we haven't paid any rent all year.
The way you budget is not how you pay, it's how it's accrued.
So. Explain that to me in layman's terms.
Um, a cash basis entity budgets cash basis, so your expense hits when the cash goes out the door. The way the city budgets is accrual basis. That means when you incur the expense, that's when the expense is recorded. So in October, you have, will not have enough money to record the expense for the rent.
Okay, I I mean, I I I'll take your word for it. I I'm not understanding it, um, but, you know, if if. If we've got to go through a separate process, then then that's fine. Um, okay.
May, may I just, uh, say something?
Wait, with me, yes.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I I that that was somewhat the point that I was gonna make and I'm willing to listen to what Vince has to say.
Okay, go ahead.
No, no, I just wanted to elaborate. I think what Tracy was saying is that on the accrual method is. If we don't authorize this transfer of funds, we're not gonna have the money in the account to pay the rent. Does that make sense, Adam? The check will bounce.
Yeah, yes, I I guess what I wasn't understanding. I, I.
There is no check and we haven't paid any rent.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's what I'm not understanding. If we didn't pay any rent, then how's anything gonna bounce or or? Or or anything like that, like what would waiting two weeks impact? Other than what are, what are?
I think it's a technicality, Adam, but to trace, we're trying hard, be financially observant and follow our, follow our own best practice.
And 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 that's absolutely correct as well, so.
Right.
Yeah.
But, uh, um, so we could certainly simply reconvene this process in two weeks and and do another ordinance if we wanted to.
Yes.
Uh, and I'm fine with either plan there, ladies and gentlemen.
Same. And I didn't make any motion one way or the other. It was just an idea, so.
And. Here we have a perfect draft of a transfer ordinance that we can just cut and paste, so. But, uh, anyway, number six, oh, number seven, I suppose. Um.
Yeah, this is the final reading.
This is the final reading and and what we were proposing to do was perhaps hold on the final reading and do, instead of putting another ordinance on the books to do another transfer. Make a few more amendments to this one before we finalized it, but I'm I'm fine with either plan. If nobody has a dog in the fight, then it seems like Tracy does, so I would suggest we go with Tracy.
Certainly.
Yeah.
Yeah. Do I, we didn't hear what you said.
I said, then you, if you don't, you'll be out of compliance with your budget.
Yeah.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. There's no other questions. Mrs. Frank. Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Pelisi.
Yes.
Mr. Byder.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes.
Motion carried. Um, next thing on the agenda is, uh, number ten. Resolution authorizing execution of agreement between New Bridge Marketing Group LLC and City of Williamsport for an LL Bean marketing event. I need a motion.
So move. Second.
Mayor, you are, well, you're spending a lot of time up there tonight.
Good. Um, yes, good evening. Uh, I think this is the last time for me, maybe. Uh, for President Yoder, Vice President Katz, members of Council Administration. Uh, what you have before you is a resolution authorizing the execution of an agreement between New Bridge Marketing Group LLC. Uh, and the City of Williamsport for an LL Bean, uh, marketing pop-up event. They're looking to have, uh, the end of October. Uh, this would be right in downtown at Fourth and Pine. We looked at various locations, uh, around the city. They do require a hundred by fifty feet. Um, I talked to Jason, or I should say, we talked to Jason Fink. Uh, we talked to Tony Eckert, who is the, uh. Believe the not, the somewhat new or maybe brand new president of downtown business folks. Um, or the Wayne Sport Business Association, I forget which one, uh, excuse me for that one. Um, but they're very excited. They're looking forward to this. I did talk to some other folks. I think I shared that with with you all earlier. Um, it it really boiled down to they, uh, and, um. The representative was unable to be on this evening. Uh, he's in LA and so, uh. He was, had some work requirements that was, he was unable to get out of, so he did apologize for that, but he was here on Tuesday. Um. And they do this, I believe, across twenty-seven cities, uh, and they've. Really liked Wayne Sports, uh, location, the proximity to the outdoors, uh, and all of our outdoor amenities, uh, and then, uh, the amenities that are offered right here. Uh, downtown, so they, they, they thought we'd be a very good fit, uh, for this, uh, program that they do. And, uh, if it goes well, they do return, uh, to cities, uh. In in future years. And so if it's a good turnout for them and and everything goes well, they would look at returning to Wayne Sport, uh, for that. So this was reviewed. Uh, uh, was it?
Safety.
Public safety, yes.
Bless you.
So, so I couldn't remember. It's my apologies.
John.
Yep, this was, uh, also reviewed in public safety and will also be a very safe pop-up event.
Mac, are you willing to stake your reputation?
I am, yes. Uh, at any rate, yeah, I think this is gonna be a great event. Um, it's gonna take place on Saturday and a Sunday, so I think we can all agree that. You know, this is gonna be a a reason for people to actually come downtown on a Sunday. I think, Derek, did you maybe even mention that there's some stores that may not usually be open on Sunday that are gonna de- decide to open because of the.
I know there were a few.
Increased foot traffic. Um. So, yeah, I mean, there's no cost to the city. Um, LL Bean and this marketing group provides the, um. Advertising materials for the event and, um, any purchase. Made by people at this event, uh, comes with a ten percent discount on all the products, so. And if you look at the the packet that Mayor Slaughter sent, um, you know, they set up, they have a couple of different booths and, you know. So at any rate, I think this is gonna be a a fun, unique event, um, and I will open it up to the other members of public safety.
Anything else?
No, just, uh, real quick. So I know I did ask the questions, uh, prior regarding the. Cost to the city, what it might, you know, and and the, uh, marketing and advertising for the event. And to Councilman Maggie's point, it's not gonna cost us anything. However, my concerns were, you know, shutting down. Uh, that intersection and what the costs to the city would be for. You know, paying our employees, paying the city's employees to come, drop off barriers, do whatever it may be. Uh, to the police, to the fire for providing direction, anything like that. Um. I I had asked about that. However, I did see that with the the permit, there's also additional incurred expenses. Um, that they would be paying for should those services need, need to to, uh, be present, so. Just wanna make sure that we weren't gonna be at a net loss for this, but I do think it's gonna be a great event for downtown. Um, like you said, Mayor, this is something that they're doing in twenty-seven different locations. Um, and hopefully this is the beginning, it's the the first initial feeler event for LL Bean, maybe to look at, uh. Maybe making some investment in Wayne Sports, so I hope it goes well.
I'll go back to one original question. Are you still, are they still planning on doing this in the intersection?
Yep, Fourth and Pine and to, I did reach out to, uh, Todd Wright at Transit and they have it on the calendar. They're good. Um, they're used to doing it many times throughout the year, so he said it wasn't that.
You feel comfortable blocking the Fourth Street?
Oh, yeah.
Cause that's gonna have to be blocked from Market Street to to William.
Um, no, probably not from Market, but yeah, we're coming, we do it, yeah. We, we do it regularly. The police are aware, fire is aware, so, yeah, we're all good to go. Transit's aware, yep.
It's gonna make it difficult for people to get in and out around the city when you're doing, you know, blocking on whole intersection.
Again, yeah, we do it multiple times throughout the year. I think we're we're well aware of it. First Fridays, the parade, et cetera.
The intersection like that.
Yeah, we do. All the downtown's blocked off, yeah.
Derek, I've been involved in First Friday for twenty-some years.
Okay, okay, okay.
Um.
What, what are the dates?
Uh, there's.
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth?
Seventh and twenty-eighth.
Twenty-seven, twenty.
Of October.
Yeah, Saturday, Sunday.
Twenty-nine.
Twenty-two, twenty-nine, yeah.
Okay.
Yep, Saturday, Sunday, yep, and. October, yeah, yeah, end of, end of October, yeah.
Wha- what's, what's the timeframe? If you can just clarify that.
Um, so they have on there from eight to six-thirty, but that includes setup and tear down.
Okay.
It'll probably be. Nine-ish to probably five, five-thirty.
I still.
I'm, I'm planning to be there.
I think it's a great idea. I just, I I think it's gonna be, um, uh, you know, for traffic, the traffic flow.
Mayor, Mayor Slaughter, um, uh, Randy, Bonnie, Liz, um. Have we done anything like this, um, recently, mostly recently, like, I mean, that any of you can remember? Um, in like the past decade or so?
Williamsport welcomes the world.
No, I mean, I mean, like a pop-up, like a single intersection, not, not like walking off the entire downtown for a massive. Event like Williamsport welcomes the world, uh, First Friday. Cause I I think from a scale perspective, they're different, right?
There have been pop-ups, Adam, but they've been, uh, usually done in parking lots and they have not been big. I mean, this is huge, a hundred feet.
Yeah, well, I mean, I mean, I mean, look, you know, hey. Th- this is definitely an outside the box idea. Um, let's try it, right? Um. Worst thing that happens is we we learn that, you know, isolated singular intersections may not be the best idea. We. We, we, we know that moving forward, um. You know, if it, if it's positive, um, you know, we, 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 we've got a a nice little idea to potentially drive traffic downtown. Right? So let's, let's try it. We, you know, and I think it's worth trying.
I do have another question, Mayor. What happens when, are they closing it up right there in this intersection? Is this gonna be closed off for two days?
You mean a whole, like, the whole time?
Yeah.
I believe so. But I don't know that a hundred percent. I believe so it is. Our police and fire, everybody's aware, we're, yeah, we could.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I I mean, I I I have confidence in our, our city personnel to to manage this properly. I I mean, I think the, the big question is, you know. Maybe it's a little bit of an unknown of how it affects traffic downtown in that area. Um. I I would think this is gonna spur more traffic than maybe usual on a regular weekend, but, you know, that's, that's really the unknown here. I I've got full confidence in our. Our staff's ability to manage this. Uh, I think that's kind of what Mayor Slaughter was getting at with, you know, everybody's aware, so. Let's try this out. This, this could be a cool thing.
Well, just keep in mind, everybody, these, this is gonna be blocked off at Market Street and we were told this a long time ago with the police department with with when we were doing a parade. You have to go a block in and out and the next block is Market Street and the next one after that is is William Street, so therefore. Fourth Street is gonna be blocked off there. You have to block off Pine Street from Edwin and at the other end, uh, is, uh, Third Street. So that whole downtown for two days is gonna be blocked off. So just keep that in mind.
Let's try it out.
There's a motion on the, on the board?
Yep.
Okay, Mrs. Frank will take the vote. Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Pelisi.
Yes.
Mr. Byder.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
No.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes.
Okay, next item on the agenda is, let's see where we're at, Mrs. Frank. Number twelve. On number twelve. Resolution authorizing an intermunicipal fire service agreement. Need a motion.
So move. Second.
Hi, Chief.
Good evening. How is everybody? Everybody awake?
Just peachy keen.
My hearing aids were off earlier. I apologize.
We'll get you for that one. You know that.
So what you have before you is a intermunicipal agreement between, uh, the City of Williamsport, the Williamsport Bureau of Fire. Old Lightcoming Township, Old Lightcoming Township Volunteer Fire Company, uh, also, that's also known as the Alliance. Um, the agreement that we had from back in nineteen ninety-nine. Um, the Alliance is going in, uh, together with Susquehanna Township and Nesbit Volunteer Fire Department. Um, to provide services for working incidents. Okay, uh, a working incident would be a structured fire, um, a vehicle accident with entrapment, uh, a mass casualty type incident. Um, and in return, they will, uh, pay us six hundred dollars to, uh. Pay for the backfill that we infer, the the cost of the backfill that we incur for the three hours that we call them, uh, call them out. Um, four hundred and fifty dollars of that will go to the city for the backfill and one hundred and fifty will go to Old Lightcoming Township Volunteer Fire Company. For their, uh, the use of the truck. Um, fuel, that kind of thing. Um, additionally, after a three-hour period, let's say they're there for three and a half hours, uh, an additional two hundred dollars will be added. So, um, that's again for the backfill. Um, if the city engine is, as it's responding, um, and a, a fire officer from Nesbit gets on scene. Determines it's not a working incident, let's say it's a dryer that's, somebody drove by, saw smoke coming out of a house and it's a laundry dryer. And, you know, in the spring or the summer where it's putting a lot out. Uh, a lot of times people will call and it becomes a working incident as it's dispatched. But the officer gets on scene, sees that it's not an ins- uh, a major incident. We're not calling in off duty until we, it's verified that it is a working incident, so. Most times they will recall us right away. And at that point, those types of incidents, uh, they will not be charged for it because we're not in court incurring and, uh. And an additional cost with on and off duty. So, um, I believe, uh, Susquehanna Township Board of Supervisors are looking at doing. The same thing that we're going tonight. They're doing it Wednesday night, I believe, the first, I believe he said the first Wednesday. So.
That would be next week, I think.
Yeah, yeah. Any questions for?
This one to public safety.
This did go to public safety. Um, I mean, the chief pretty much explained it. Um. He explained it very well, uh, just, just so everyone is aware, if you didn't see the updated resolution that he sent out. Um, you'll notice a, an extra letter added under, um. One, the service fee, and that is, um, just stating that. If no incident is found and people are recalled, there will be no additional, there will be no charge, so. That wasn't in the original resolution and that was something that we talked about at public safety that we thought definitely needed to be in there, so. Outside of that, I'll open up the floor to, um, other members of public safety.
Yes, Vince.
Yep, thank you. So, um, thank you, Chief. Appreciate it. Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Okay.
Loud and clear.
Yeah.
Now, the updated intermunicipal fire services agreement, I see here that it has the agreement made between the City of Williamsport. The township of Old Lightcoming and the township of Susquehanna. Um, I just wanna make sure that, did we cover and make sure that we have all entities included in on this? Uh, yes, the, they are all in, on board with it. I believe it was just a typo. Um, I know Renee had made some, uh, adjustments to it, so. Uh, we would, we do need to re-add those other. uh, we, we, we do need to re-add those other three entities.
And the other three entities would be?
City of Williamsport.
The City of Williamsport.
Old Lightcoming Township Volunteer Fire Company.
Mm-hmm.
And Nesbit Volunteer Fire Company.
Okay. So with that, I would like to make a motion to amend to include the City of Williamsport, Old Lightcoming Township Volunteer Fire Company, and the Nesbit Volunteer Fire Company.
Sorry, I missed the whole discussions.
And I'll, I'll second that, that motion to amend, Vince. Also on the resolution.
Thank you, Adam.
For clarification for myself, where are we adding that? Where is, where is it?
Yeah.
That's on the updated one that has the, the charge.
Right. Yep.
I believe. We're adding into the resolution or the agreement?
On, on the resolution.
Resolution.
Yes.
Okay.
Second page, or second.
Okay.
Correct.
Hmm. Mm-hmm.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Sorry.
No. Yeah, my apologies. I, I should have elaborated on that. Yeah. So I would like to make a motion to amend paragraph two of the resolution that states hereby the appropriate city officials are hereby authorized to execute intermunicipal fire services agreement between the Williamsport Bureau of Fire, Old Lightcoming Township, Susquehanna Township, and to include the City of Williamsport, Old Lightcoming Township Volunteer Fire Company, and Nesbit Volunteer Fire Company.
I'll second.
And we had a second with that, with Adam. Any other questions? Um.
Sure.
A vote on the amendments. Mrs. Frank.
Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Mr. Mackey?
Yes.
Mr. Pelisi?
Yes.
Mr. Bider?
Yes.
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Mrs. Katz?
Yes.
Mr. Yoder?
Yes.
Now I need a vote, a motion for the resolution.
No, we have, we have a motion for the resolution already.
Did we? I didn't.
We did that.
Yeah.
Didn't you confuse me? Who seconded that? Who seconded that motion then?
I did.
Oh, okay. Um, Mrs. Frank, we need a vote.
Uh, hang on, quick question. Hang on. Um, so Chief, can you help me understand the financials a little bit more? So you, you said essentially when we respond, six hundred dollars is gonna come back in, in essentially payment for response, for fifty of which is, is sent to the City of Williamsport specifically, correct?
Correct.
Um. I, I could be wrong, but that seems like a light cost to respond. I mean, I mean, Susquehanna Township is not very far. Um, you know, it's only on the other side of South Williamsport, but I just, I mean, a- a- and I don't fully understand the equipment we're using, but I just, I, I, I guess I was expecting a much higher cost for us to respond to that um, compared to essentially four hundred and fifty dollars. Um, what, what? What am I missing?
That, that's based on fifty dollars per firefighter coming in off duty, and when they come in off duty, each of those three firefighters that come in, um, will be, uh, they, they will be there for three hours. So that's the four hundred and fifty. So the, um, one fifty times three hours is four fifty.
O- okay, so that covers the additional cost to come in. Um, but that's not a fully burdened cost, meaning that doesn't cover any impacts to, um, insurance benefits, any equipment, fuel to get there, correct?
Correct. So as specifically with the fuel, that one hundred and fifty dollars, that's part of the six hundred that will be going to Old Lightcoming because generally it will be Engine fourteen-one that runs out of Old Lightcoming will be handling that call and Old Lightcoming pays for the fuel. Um, if Engine one goes, uh, from headquarters because Engine fourteen-one is tied up, uh, the city will receive the full six hundred.
Okay, so essentially, if our equipment is going, the additional cost, like we will get it all and it's meant to cover our actual full cost of responding.
No, not necess- no, it's not for, the one hundred and fifty dollars is for the response of the, the apparatus. So the fuel, that kind of thing. But the four hundred and fifty dollars is to cover the cost of the backfill that we call in and we get dispatched to, um, a fire out of the city or Old Lightcoming.
Yeah. But no, what, what I meant by that was, so four fifty covers our people, one fifty covers the equipment. Depending on what equipment is used, it drives where that one fifty goes.
Correct, correct. If Old Lightcoming's engine, Engine fourteen-one responds, they get it. If Engine one responds, um, the city receives it.
Okay. And, and, and Sam, you're, you're, you're confident that one fifty covers, um, the costs on our end if our apparatus goes?
Yes, yes.
Okay, okay. And, and sorry, sorry to get into the weeds. Um, I just, th- this, this is a great idea, right? Um, this is, I, I think a number of us have, have thrown this idea out about, you know, looking at regionalization of services. I mean, this is essentially a, a rough, um, uh, en- entry level scale of kind of what that looks like. So this is a great idea, but just want to make, I, I don't have any kind of, um, you know, breakdown of how that works other than just what you gave us verbally. So I just want to make sure I was understanding it correctly that we recovered. So thank you for, for clarifying that for me, Chief.
And, and for, just for the record, um, a small department like Nesbit, um, we may go there once a year. Um, I, I really don't foresee us going there more than three times a year. So it's not something that would be, that would occur often. Um, and that was one of the, the things that Chief Flicker had, uh, had mentioned. He said that he felt that this would be a, a great option for them. Um, to make sure that they have, uh, response and, um, they're recognizing their, their needs. So.
Thank, thank you, Chief. I, I appreciate that clarity. That's super helpful.
You bet.
No other questions, Bonnie. Thank you.
Okay. That, you would say that we would only get called out maybe once a year, lucky, if, if, you know, s- with that, it's, it just doesn't seem possible that we'd only be called out once.
Well, no, just, just the Susquehanna Township.
That's, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
They're able to, I, I mean, that's spread out quite a bit.
Yeah, but there, there's not a lot of homes there. So if, if we were dispatched over there for a structure fire, they, they don't have a lot of structure fires.
Okay.
Um, just like the city, the city, we don't have the number of structure fires that we had ten years ago or, you know, twenty years ago. Um, you know, where we were going, we'd go from one structure fire to another structure fire, you know, bing bang boom, three times right in a row.
Hmm.
So, you know.
That's interesting.
Yeah.
That's really interesting. Well, that's all I have. Does anybody have any other questions?
Mrs. Frank. Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Mr. Mackey?
Yes.
Mr. Pelisi?
Yes.
Mr. Bider?
Yes.
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mrs. Katz?
Yes.
Mr. Yoder?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, and Molly, we are there at number thirteen, lucky thirteen.
Resolution, minimum municipal obligation for the year twenty twenty-four.
Need a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Good evening.
Eric Beecher.
Um, this is the annual request to fund the pensions for each of the three pension funds that the city employees have. Um, so we have, uh, the fire pension fund, the police pension fund, and the officers and employees pension fund. We, um, through working with Mock and Hop, um, based on, um, actuarial results and, um, projected payroll for twenty twenty-four. We would need to fund the fire pension fund at approximately one million five hundred and ninety-three thousand. We would need to fund the police pension fund at a little over one million eight hundred and eighty-nine thousand. And we would need to fund the, uh, officers and employees pension fund at a little over eight hundred and seventy-three thousand for a total of approximately four million three hundred and fifty-five, uh, thousand dollars. Um, again, this was calculated by Mock and Hop and is an annual obligation of the city.
You just went to finance, right? Ms. Mealy?
This, this did go to finance, um, but there's, there's not really a whole lot of discussion involved with the MMO in terms of, you, you don't argue with the numbers. You just, that's what they are. Uh, the good news is it's slightly down, um, from last year, uh, and dramatically down from, from twenty twenty-one, when I imagine we were still working off the twenty nineteen valuation and, and things were real, um. Crappy, but, uh, but I think the, the bulk of the finance committee discussion just centered around, um, whether we'd be using the twenty twenty-three valuation next year, um, how that was likely to impact our twenty twenty-five MMO. Um, and, uh, and what caused the, the minor changes to the numbers this year. Um, it seemed like those were mostly driven by, uh, some retirements in the fire department, um, and some people who, who exited the drop program. But, uh, but yeah, um, I'll, um, Jonathan Williamson before me on city council used to use this opportunity every year to, um, grandstand a little bit about how if future genera- if, if, if past generations had, um, set aside the proper amount of funding for the, uh, promises that they were making, then we would not be uh, putting four million, uh, four and a half million dollars worth of a twenty-seven, twenty-eight million dollar budget, um, just toward funding a pension plan that, that is not, uh, that, that we didn't fully fund when we created it. Um, so I will make that point. Um, it is the reason, uh, why I try so hard to make sure that we are paying for the debts that we incur and that we are not, um, bankrupting the city year over year or, or, or not creating an adequate cash flow for the city because that, that really only hurts worse in the long run, as we can see. Um, if we didn't, if we weren't paying this much into the MMO, um, right? We, we'd have some money to, to create a city hall. We'd, we'd have a lot of things. Um, but, uh, that said, um, these numbers are what they are, and this is what we need to contribute for twenty twenty-four.
Hmm.
Any other questions?
Just.
Yes.
Just to, um, it, it is offset some by this date, um, funding that we get to, uh, to mitigate the, uh, the total cost. And, uh, for twenty twenty-three, the city received, uh, one point five million. Give or take a few thousand in there.
Mm-hmm.
So.
Which was up from twenty-two.
That up.
So.
Yeah, for twenty-four.
Yeah.
Anything else? If not, Mrs. Frank.
Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Mr. Mackey?
Yes.
Mr. Pelisi?
Yes.
Mr. Bider?
Yes.
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mrs. Katz?
Yes.
Mr. Yoder?
Yes.
Thank you very much, Molly.
Thank you.
Um, item number fourteen is a certificate of appropriateness. Um, Mr. Mimi, can you get up and be here? Are you awake? It's been a long night.
Good evening, members of council and, and Vice President Katz. Uh, yeah, it's been a long night. I'm hopefully closing the show. I have no jokes to offer, but uh, it, the Hart Board is presenting to you a certificate of appropriateness for a property located at, gotta put my glasses on to see, seven fifty-four Gray Street. It's the, the request had originally been to remove two chimneys on the project and then to, uh, repair the roof and, and the gutters around them. Uh, the project, uh, through discussion with the committee and the homeowner, they are going to be removing the unsafe chimney that was ready, is, is in potential collapsed into the house adjacent to it and keeping the other one so that the, the, uh, the prominent outline of the chimney on this property is still being maintained. And then they're also requested, and the owner agreed to, uh, saving the bricks and keeping them with the property so that at some point in time, uh, if another owner decides to restore the property to its original uh, structure or, or, or design, uh, that the bricks would be there, the old bricks to, to do it. Uh, so it's here for your approval tonight. Uh, wasn't much discussion relevant other than to make sure that the highlighted that in the original brick chimney, the prominent one is maintained.
I don't think you did. I need a motion on that. Thanks.
So moved.
Thanks.
Second.
Uh, any questions from anyone? If not, I'll take a vote, Mrs. Frank.
Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Mr. Mackey?
Yes.
Mr. Pelisi?
Yes.
Mr. Bider?
Yes.
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mrs. Katz?
Yes.
Mr. Yoder?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, number fifteen, except for filing ERC minutes, um, March twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three, um, this is, uh, April fourth, uh, April, uh, twenty, God, I need my glasses here. Um, twenty-six, twenty twenty-three, May tenth, twenty twenty-three, um, Water and Sewer Authority, uh, seven twenty-six, twenty twenty-three, eight twenty-three, twenty-three. I need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? Mrs. Frank will take the vote.
Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Mr. Banky?
Yes.
Mr. Pelisi?
Yes.
Mr. Bider?
Yes.
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mrs. Katz?
Yes.
Mr. Yoder?
Yes.
Announcements. The next regularly scheduled city council meeting will be held on Thursday, October twelfth, twenty twenty-three at seven P M in Trade and Transit two, one forty-four West Fourth Street, third floor. Uh, upcoming meetings, uh, Monday, October first, uh, Planning Commission at twelve P M, Veterans Memorial Park, four thirty P M. Uh, Tuesday, October tenth, Public Safety at eleven thirty, Finance at one P M, Public Works at two thirty. Uh, October eleventh, ERC at nine A M, and O and E Pension Board at three thirty P M. Uh, and we're back down to city council meeting on Thursday, October twelfth. Uh, any comments from city council members?
Bonnie, I, I, I'm sorry. Let Eric go. And then I have one.
Uh, my next question, uh, is to do a transition from this one. I was not here. And, uh, it is sort of changed.
Can you put your mic on?
Sorry. Uh, I pulled a Liz.
I give you the finger, but it's too late and I had to catch it on camera.
So, um.
Actually, Eric, could you sit back a little bit? There you go. Now, there you go.
If you can please just let us know when fall cleanup is gonna start so we don't have piles of leaves and things like that in the road, um, for longer than they need to be. Thank you.
Yep, yep.
Um, one thing I did forget, and Randy reminded me, we had an executive session on ninth twenty-six. On, uh, it was past Monday or Tuesday?
Tuesday.
Tuesday. I need to get into the records. Thank you so much, Randy, for reminding us that.
Thank you, John.
Any other comments from any, anyone in city council?
Yeah, Bonnie, just real quick, um, I, so I'm joining remotely, um, because of school, um, and, and that hasn't really been an issue until this week in the past. I just wanted to thank all of you for, uh, working with me and, and, and some of the things I'm trying to do outside of the city. I've learned through this process that, um, takes a village of support to kind of get through some of this. And, uh, the point I want to make is that all of you are a part of my village, and I'm really proud of that and just, uh, grateful for the inspiration, for the, um, for the collaboration, for the just discussions about a lot of just different stuff. Um, because a lot, some of that has shaped a lot of what I've done down here and continue to do. So just thanks a lot, everybody. And that includes our city clerk as well. Um, that includes our mayor. That includes everybody.
Thank you, Adam. And I want to thank you guys for keeping me under control here tonight very much. Um, anything from the administration? Anything to add? Anybody? Nope. Uh, members of the public? Is there anybody in the public that wants to make a statement? Nope. Uh, is the news media still here that would like to make a statement?
Yeah.
We got news media here. If not, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Yeah.
Good night, everybody. Good night, everybody.